So, um, by God, you're just. The awakening FEMA on the Bay storm, so I've been learning very quickly.
Gary Layman, City Mayor, Jared Hallwell, and the basic course I took, I don't even remember it so long ago.
Hi, I'm Uncle Brian, I'm mayor in Augusta. I took this training, my Gary, wanderer, and I can remember many years ago. Captain Jenkins, one, two, six, first, third, estimate, this will be my first training. So I can retain the main flight and the gas, so.
Chief Fire Chief, Senator Gaster, also in town, House, for opening.
We should call outside, select, and then obviously, okay, we're adding, and this will be my first training.
My name is Luke Sedgwick, I'm a transient, I'm heading to, I'm secretary director for White, White.
First, you know, as well, sir. Um, like I said, my name is Theodore Marshall. I started off in a fire service back in 2011 when I was an active in Rayburg. Um, I moved back up to your vein where I'm from. I've been with Augusta Fire since 2015, where Forest Machinist, I'm charged to make. Uh, I've been with technical management since 2019. Um, I started as school planner and transitioned during COVID to the emergency planner role, where I worked a lot with multiple emergency planning committees, hazard mitigation, and the hazmat team preparation for that. Um, I'm also a Call Unit member with Maine Forest Service. I've had two deployments under my belt, one to Quebec and then one to Colorado, where I was involved in helping suppress large fires. Um, as we'll go through this, we'll talk about my experience with those two fires, because on those fires, the National Emergency Management System is used exclusively. Um, the Forest Service naturally uses these and it perfected them to a team. So a lot of the times, I'll use a lot of examples of that. Uh, my instructor expectations, uh, my goal is not to secure and read slide it slide by slide to death by power. My goal is to utilize the slides to help jump off, just, uh, type up certain points. There is a lot of information, like I said, we're basically scratching the surface um, of the National Emergency Management System, um, and its incident command system. There's a lot of other classes you can take if you want to dive deep into this, um, and learn more about it, which I would encourage you, however, just make sure you have lots of coffee with you. Uh, I know this stuff is very, very dry. I do my best to try and, um, my best to try and lighten it up a little bit, but there's only so much I can do. This is a FEMA course, so I'm going to apologize in advance. Um, like I said, due to time, I'm moving fast, I'll be speaking fast, so please don't pull that against me in my evaluation. Uh, there is no quips, by the way, there's just a violation of making sure. Um. Um, my goal is I want to try to attempt to convey this information in a way. I will try to make jokes, I'm not a comedian, if I was, I wouldn't be here right now, I'd be off touring with, um, other comedians. But here I am, I will make awful jokes, my goal is we try to understand each other. Um, if you want handouts, you all line and print them off or look at them, uh, but they're not going to match the slides because I made modifications to this. And then there's also an abundant of information that is redundant throughout the slot, uh, out these slides. Uh, this will be, you'll see some of the same information multiple times. So I will try to hit on it briefly first. Um, I might wait to talk about some things later on because it goes into more detail, but I will try and move this as quick as I can. So here's our course review, uh, right now, we're talking about introduction, what is NIMS, National Emergency Management System, talk about ICS organization and features. Um, we're spending a lot of time in unit three because the ICS system is what, um, is very key in incident management. Uh, we'll talk about what emergency operations centers look like, and we'll talk about that groups, uh, multi-agency coordination groups, and the joint information system, and we'll spend a little bit of time on preparedness. So, the purpose of this class is to provide the senior elected officials of Connecticut County with basic information to at least give them an understanding of what we're looking for, if disaster or an incident happened in this county. Um, we want to just kind of give you guys a heads up and say, hey, if we have something where you're immediately brought into the situation, you at least have kind of, you need to have a basic understanding of what we're dealing with and what, how we do business. The other piece too is we always want to improve our working relationship with the talent. Um, we try to come out and do this person because we want to have names and face, that way I can meet you and that way if we're seeing or you're meeting me for the first time, and I'm hoping it's not a fire around or some sort of disaster. Um, the best time to meet your neighbors is not when the house is burning. And again, like I said, is provide names to, uh, faces in our office. So emergency management is the managerial function charged for creating the framework within which the communities reduce vulnerabilities to hazards and broken disasters. Um, a lot of times, we're going to operate trying to help mitigate, or they're trying to prevent disaster, or help prevent disasters, um, or try to prevent the impact of the disaster by doing certain things, which we'll talk about later. Um, we do a little bit of work in response, response is a very small piece of emergency management. Uh, we spend a lot of our time in the other areas, and then recover. We're working right now with the storms back in May and the storm back in, uh, December. We're recovering, helping communities. Right now, I'm working with the town of Vienna to help get them toward the FEMA, so that they can get money back to help repair some of, uh, help get money back that they used to repair their roads that were damaged. So here's our office, right now Sean Cooper is the acting director, um, he retired and came back. Um, Jason Decker is our deputy director, he is also an Augusta Fire fighter as well. We have myself, and then Mackenzie Trues, our emergency management specialist. So what is NIMS? So, before we start, you have one thing, what's an incident? An incident is a deviation from predictable life. For us, it happens, messes up our day, we have to try and fix that. People come in, we self-stabilize the situation, so a truck comes, help fix your car, takes it away, and you have to deal with everything after that, insurance, um, body shops, all that fun stuff. Most of the time, incidents are handled at the local level. Our department handles many incidents throughout the day, same with the police department. But what happens when those incidents get very large? When something happens, it's a disaster or an incident, or something gets bigger, it also gets more complex. How do we manage something that's large and it's complex? Well, this is what NIMS does. It helps provide a standard, um, that we can use to, that when your people from outside the state or outside the county or outside our communities come in, we're all kind of on the same plan, yield, and the same shooting user. So the legal basis for NIMS, first, we have the Homeland Security Presidential Director, V, which came out in 2003. Um, prior to this incident command system, um, was used by fire departments, um, for many, many years, it's early eighties. However, there's a little incident back in 2001, you probably all remember it. Something you've interviewed, I don't know if it was a number, thankfully. Uh, but after that, there was a lot of issues of interconnected, interconnected ability and being able to merge federal agencies with local agencies, um, and so they needed to say, hey, how do we fix this? So 2003, they came out with this directive to help manage incidents and bring, um, create the national response framework, which we'll talk about in a couple of slides. But basically, what it does is it mandates that NIMS be used across all federal agencies in the support of state and local efforts during an incident. The national response is a guide, help the national response and provide guidelines and plans to support community resiliency. Their goal, defense goal, is they want to try to make sure that we, as a community, can handle our own incidences before asking for help. The other piece, the presidential policy directive eight, that came out in 2011. The goal of that was, is they wanted to try and help pair us for incidents. Um, that way we were trying to put our efforts in doing stockpiling, ensuring that our equipment is ready, um, ready to go in an incident. Their goal was to build and sustain national pairers using a common approach. Um, it's also defined the five mission areas I talked about earlier, mitigation, the preparation, um, the prevention, response, recovery aspects. The national response framework also emphasizes partnership. They want us to ensure that we have great working relationships with our local partners, our local stakeholders, um, with our communities, which is why we're also here. You represent your communities, you were all elected to be here tonight, to help make decisions of their behalf. Same with most of you that are in the audience, you were elected to help make decisions to keep their lives tolerable and livable. One of the things that the national federal government likes is they want to try to keep things at the local level. Um, there's obviously a lot of people, America's a very large country, the federal government is very, 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 very busy. Right, Gary?
No.
Oh, so we want to try to make, we can try to handle things in a row. There was once a little town in West Virginia, they had a bridge that was going back. They went to the state and said, hey, our bridge is going back, we need you to help fix this. State said, hey, we can't fix it, we don't have money. So they said, okay, we'll go to the federal government. Federal government said, hey, no, we can't, we don't have the money, we don't have the time to fix this. So little town said, okay, this was back in the seventies, by the way, I'll put this perspective. So little town said, okay, well, I got an idea, let's send a letter to Russia. So they did, they sent a letter to Russia saying, hey, can you provide funds to help us build up, fix our bridge? So Russia, during the height of the Cold War, sends a delegation to this town in West Virginia saying, hey, why are you writing us a letter to help fix your bridge? It said, oh, our government will do it, we thought we'd ask you, see if you'd do it. Okay, we'll go back and talk to our people. Federal government, government, let's, whoa, no, 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 get that back. We have money for you to help fix your bridge. So the federal government doesn't like when they try to get you started for getting help. So that's why they want to try to make sure that if you do need help, there's proper procedures and policies to follow through. They want to start at local level, and then go to come to us in the county, then we'll go to the county, and then we go to the federal government. Does that make sense to everybody? So, the National Emergency Management System, it's a broad concept. Um, there's a lot of things that they want very specific, and there's a lot of things that are left open to interpretation and left open for flexibility. Um, they want to ensure that this is not a tree cutter plan, um, this is how we adapt it to our communities. So here on the screen, we have NIMS, what it is and what it's not. So what you're trying to think, but this is like having plans to build a house. Every, we have a basic general building code for the state. We can apply those plans to anywhere in the state. Where they might change is if you can't take a house that's built in Maine, you can't build it the same way in Florida. There's different hazards and different threats. So we need to make sure we can adapt, that's why there's always some flexibility in this. What they want to try to do is they want to try and standardize some certain things, terminology, um, some plans, there's some other things we'll talk about a little later. But here from this chart, we can see that what this is, it's, it's not just used in, or just, we can utilize NIMS for an event that we have coming up. When the Iron Man comes to town, to the city of Augusta, Chief Gorder does a great job of filling out an incident action plan to ensure that we know who's going to be doing what, when they'll be doing it, and what communications we're going to have during that incident. To ensure that if an event, or if something does happen, if the ground organic matter is still oscillating device, we know that we're going to have something in place to help minimize the impact of that event. So here we have the NIMS components. Here are the building blocks of the National Emergency Management Systems. The first piece is resource management. Knowing what you have, knowing how this can be utilized most effectively, knowing where you can get more resources in the event that something bad does happen. Community coordination is also, um, a very big building block in this piece. This is where the majority of our efforts are going to be, this right in this area. And then we have communication, information management. How do I get information, how do I pass it along to people that are making decisions to ensure that the right decisions are, the, the person in charge has the right information to make the right decisions? Sorry, I'm a little dyslexic, so I swap words around sometimes, that's why. So, here we have a couple of terms, command, and we'll talk about who the incident commander is, what his responsibilities, what is the act of directing, ordering, or controlling by virtue of explicit statutory or regulatory, regulatory or delegated authority. We're going to talk about delegated authority and how that plays in later on. We have multi-agency coordination, we have many people coming together, they're all going to have their own interests in mind. So that, you know, how do we ensure that everybody's on the same page and using, how do we talk to each other? Um, how do we ensure that we're all working towards a common goal? We have an incident command system. It's a standardized approach to on-scene commanded control to ensure that all the resources are working towards involving the incident. How do we make that happen? Again, we're going to talk a lot more about this in the next, uh, unit. Emergency operation centers, we'll talk about that a little later on. And basically, it's a physical or a virtual location where we get together and we're all right there sitting, talking, figuring out problems, how to get resources to other, to the incident commander to help him accomplish his goal. And then our joint information system. Basically, it's the system of how information is passed from people on the ground, the incident commander, to the EOCs, and then to the, out to the public, because we want to ensure that they have an idea of what's going on. Um, they are getting informed so that they're making the right decisions and they're not freaking out and then doing bad things that we don't want to coordinate with here. And then our multi-agency coordination groups, now. If we're activating a local multi-agency coordination group, things have gone very bad, very, very, very bad. This is not something that you see very often in our state. Um. I don't remember, I looked up top ahead, last time we activated one for kind of accounting, um, but this is basically where you're going to get involved in this process. You as senior elected officials are going to be basically advising the incident commander certain policies that you want change, or you want him to implement to ensure that he is doing his job appropriately, or, um, you may want to change his, Chief Gorder's not going to say this, you may want to change his priorities from, I'm not really worried about the river right here, but I'm worried about this very old church sitting here next to the river, how can we help mitigate that? Hopefully that'll make sense a little bit later on. So, we have an incident, this is what we're looking at at the start. We have the incident commander, usually a person who behaves with other people for getting resources. When an incident becomes more and more complex, and more and more resources are coming in to help, that becomes a lock for one, two, three, four, and so forth. So how do we help staff, how do we help that person, the incident commander, while they're making all these decisions? We expand it, we utilize incident command, we unify the command, we utilize people off-site, so that way they can do all the hard work, and the incident commander can sit there and worry about his incident, worry about his people that are working. So, you're going to see this slide a few more times, um, but the thing that I want to highlight here is the first thing. Your, the senior official's role, National Emergency Management System and National Incident Command System is ensuring the safety of the citizens and protection of property, ensuring continuity of government. We need you to stay in charge, that you can make decisions, to ensure that everybody is making, is staying safe, everybody isn't getting evacuated, there's some, there are certain things that we can't do that we need you to do, um, to help keep people safe. Again, glossing over some stuff right now, but hopefully come later on. Again, if you have a question, please raise your hand, I'm more than happy if you're confused, um, I can try and explain it a little better. So any questions over that, again, that's just kind of glossing over a lot of things, um, we're going to talk more about later on. Pretty good? Everybody going, scratching their head going, what is this guy talking about that? All right. So. Now we're going to talk about ICS, incident command system. So it's a standardized on-scene approach for all hazards. Doesn't matter if it's a police shooting, doesn't matter if it's a fire, doesn't matter if it's a hazmat incident, doesn't matter if it's a, um, bowl of tournament, or a Super Bowl, or a presidential visit. This is how we're going to try to manage everybody to ensure that we're all working to resolve an incident or work to make sure everybody stays safe. It allows users to adopt integrated organizational structures to match the complexities and demands of a single or multiple incidents going on at once, to ensure that all the resources are accounted for and utilized effectively. Um, the ICS was developed back in seventies in California. Um, the early seventies, they had a lot of very disastrous wildfires, shocking, you know, Californian wildfires. Um, but, one of the things they found was there was a lot of, there was a lot of issues, people weren't talking to each other the way they should, there was, uh, duplication efforts where they're sending similar teams to fight the same fire that they need to, they couldn't talk to each other appropriately, um. Some agencies have other concerns, other agencies did, they weren't, they were meshing, they didn't work well together. So, state of California got together and said, hey, how do we fix this? So what they did was they built a fire scope program, which is a big long acronym, I used to know it, I can't remember off the top of my head. So, you remember Chief Gorder? Okay, I have it somewhere. Uh, but they basically said, hey, we need to standardize the way we do things. We need to standardize when someone gets on scene, if they're in charge, they need to make decisions, and then who's going to help support them. And then that turned to the ICS, and then in the early eighties, National Fire Academy got hold of us and said, hey, this is great. So they started teaching it to all the fire chiefs throughout the entire country. And then that took off from there because obviously, in fires, things can get very chaotic very quickly. So they want to try to make sure that where was in charge, they had an idea of how to manage what's going on. So, here we have an example of ICS structure. Now, on paper, this looks very neat, however, it can be very complex and very simple. Um, for the Deepwater Horizon Incident, um, when they, the oil spill in the Gulf, um, that incident command board was eight feet long and had, I think it was a couple thousand people in that incident command structure alone. Um, hopefully we won't do that here, and I really don't want that. But here we have the basic incident command, we have incident commander here in Orange at the top. He's supported by sometimes the deputy incident commander, and then a colleague next to him is the command staff, the public information officer, the safety officer, and the liaison officer. These people report directly to incident commander to help him and support his role. And then after that, we have the operations section chief, we have the planning section chief, the logistics section chief, and the finance and admin section chief. We'll go over what they do here a little later, but they basically break down, they help the incident commander with his rules and, um, taking some of the burden, some of the responsibility is off him, so that they can be on it. So the purpose of the ICS is first and foremost, the safety of the responders. Um, we want to ensure that accountability is paramount. We want to ensure that no one is getting lost. Um. We look at a lot of fire incidents, what's been landed through deaths in the fire service. One of the biggest things has been accountability, uh, when Captain Barnes died in Berwick, uh, one of the top things was, nobody knew where he was. They knew where's the building, but didn't know where. They totally forgot about the unfortunate. Uh, so when this party starts down on the radio, they ran a loss of where they could find him. Luckily, they were able to get him out, I shouldn't say luckily, this person passed away, but they were able to recover his body. Another key piece too, especially in this incident, was communication. Communication is a huge important factor, especially when incidents become large and complex. Um. Determining what information is relevant, what information, what information is not, um, is often can either lead the incident commander to make decisions that may not help the incident, or, or things go much easier because of this information makes the decisions go better for the incident. Does that make sense? Yeah. So, here we have examples of how the ICS is used. We have fires, structural, wildland, natural disasters, such as tornadoes, floods, ice storms, earthquakes, um, human-animal disease outbreak. During COVID, the city of Augusta, I use the city of Augusta because I've worked there, and I host, obviously, I can use these examples, so I'm going to pick on Chief Gorder a lot, um, because I can. Uh. But the city of Augusta, we had an ICS structure, um, for how we were dealing and making decisions. Um, and how we integrated as a whole city response. Um, at the state level, they had an ICS structure as well. Um, we have search and rescue missions, when people go missing, the, uh, the water service, they bring in their ICS structure as well. Um, hazardous materials incidents, criminal acts, uh, during the most recent shooting in Lewiston, they had an ICS structure, because someone needed to be top making those decisions. Um, Super Bowl. They use ICS there, that's all broken down, who's in charge of what, obviously it's a very big incident. So some of the benefits of ICS. ICS can be expanded and contracted, and we can, as big as we need to, or as small as we need to. Um, if we have, again, for example, using Augusta as an example, if we have a fire alarm in Augusta, when we arrive with all of our fire, perhaps, personnel, we're utilizing this, it's a very small incident, but we're still utilizing, someone in charge making decisions, we have someone who's in charge of safety, make sure I'm not doing something stupid, um, that would make the situation worse. Um, it also allows personnel from various, variety of agencies to move rapidly into the command structure. When I go to Colorado, or I go out west, go fight wildland fires, I have a pretty good idea of what the incident's, what the incident command structure can look at. When I get handed an incident action plan, it's standardized. I know exactly where I need to go to find the information I'm looking for. If I want to know what the comms plan is, I know it's right there on page five, sometimes. If I need to know who's in charge of medical, and if, if one of my friends get hurt, I know exactly where to go in that plan. Um, when I went to Quebec to fight wildland fires up there, it was almost the exact same. One difference is all French, it's a spot. Uh, when they did their incident safety brief in the morning, um, they would do it all in French, and they would come over to us and said, okay, there we go, and they would speak French. I would speak English, so it's a very French accent. But that's, we understand they use the same process as we did, because it works so well. Um, provides logistical and administrative support. Again, as a incident grows in size, it increases complexity. If you have forty trucks, forty fire trucks coming, you're going to run into issues with fire trucks, they're going to break down, they're going to need tires, they're going to need hose. Someone always. Someone always forgets something when they go out west. So you need help supply those. It might be as small as a toothbrush or it might be something big as, you know, a sleeping bag because they didn't, they need a sleeping bag when they go out west. True story. Um, it might be something specialized. Hey, we're going to task you guys, we're, you're going to go clear, um, a path through this woods so you can help attack the fire. Cool. Our chainsaws aren't adequate to handle the trees this size. Cool. There's a chainsaw for you, brand new out of the box. That was fun. Uh, and it's also helps save cost. By not duplicating efforts, you're not doing the same thing twice or multiple or having multiple, done multiple time for people. Um, I did the basic emergency management course a couple of years ago and one of my instructors was actually in the incident command team for the nine eleven attacks in New York. One of the things he said, a huge problem, people were just showing up and doing things or making decisions without consulting other people. So they said, hey, we need to go find masks, the surgical mask, help our responders on the ground zero. Cool. So we spent a lot of time and effort trying to find masks, couldn't find any. Well, we'll find out, someone else take it upon themselves to go get all the masks. They take them all and they put them in a warehouse and didn't know about it. So you could have saved a whole lot of time and the other person could have gone, hey, I got you. So here we have the fourteen management characteristics. Um, we're going to go over these here in the next few slides. Um, this has basically helped us understand how do we work those as a team. The first one is common terminology. Obviously, police officers here? Police officers, oh, actually, sorry, Chief Grover. Um, police officers have over ten codes. However, state of Maine has different ten codes than state of Hampshire, than the state of Massachusetts, than the state of California. Um, there's a huge push to use simple plain speed. When I arrive, I'm not going to sit there and go, hey, we've got a code yellow, um, for this house here. Do you understand what code yellow is?
I do know.
Exactly. But if I arrive, but if I understand, so hey, I have a single story structure, I've got smoke showing from the, um, the front of the house, um, we're going to go into an offensive attack. Do you have a general idea what's going on?
Sure do.
Exactly. So that's all we're trying to do is plain speed and plain, um, simple terms. That way if we need to bring people apart from one of our job, at least have a general idea of what we're doing. This, uh, back in the LA riots, um, they brought in the National Guard and Marine Corps. They were, there's a Marine element that was rolling down the street and some officers from Oakwood and California were taking fire from a building. They said, hey, can you stop? We, we need some help here. The officer that's firing us, Marine said, yeah, sure, I promise. They hopped out. They took up a secure position. The police said, hey, we're going to go in, cover us. Marine said, absolutely. Now, any veterans here? What is cover fire? Cover mean in military speaking?
Like providing suppressive fire while someone's shooting?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Chief Grover, what is cover in police speaking?
I'm walking up to the guy in front of me.
Exactly. So imagine the shock when the police officers face on the Marine Corps and said, okay, we'll cover you. And then proceeded to open fire on the building. That, that's a huge difference in communication. So we want to ensure that something like that doesn't happen. That's why we use common term, common term, common terminology, excuse me. It's ensure that we're all on the same page. We all know when I say, hey, cover me, you're not going to stop the fire. And the same goes down to talk about incident facilities, um, resource description. I'm not going to get into it, but typing is a whole typing, uh, sauce itself. Um, when they order a fire truck, it's got to meet certain requirements so they know that they're getting what they're asking for, um, and the position types, which we'll go over a little bit. Management by objectives. We want to ensure that we're always working towards resolution of the incident. So we want to make sure that we have clear, concise objectives. When I roll up on a fire scene, I know that one of our objectives is going to be put out the fire, right? But how am I going to do that? Do we need to bring a water can? Do we need to bring a line? Is it really on fire? We're going to send the ladder truck and spray water down on top? That's going to be determined by the incident commander, but it's always going to be working towards progression of resolving the incident. These are usually going to be set by the incident commander, which is probably. I lost anybody yet? Yeah. All doing good? Okay. Incident action plan. Incident action planning is great for, you know, we have an incident that's coming up like the Ironman, um, Oakfest, they do a little bit of incident action planning, St. Louis, um, our trailer, our radios, um, is Winter, having like festival or anything like that?
Oh, I don't know.
Was that part of it? Yeah.
Fourteenth of July gatherings of the.
They can do a five K too.
Yep.
But there's always some sort of planning that goes into that to ensure that, okay, if I have a, a five K, there's going to be a lot going here. It'll all be, you know, running. I don't do five Ks anymore because I, I don't like running. Uh, it's good for me. I know it. I just don't like running. But, uh, but you know, everybody's trying to put this together. There's some people like myself that don't like running that, you know, they may have struggled towards it and they say, look, my brain's getting bad. I need to handle this. Um, you want to sort of plan for that in a five K, right? You want to have something going on. For the Ironman, it's a multi-jurisdictional event. It's going from Augusta into neighboring counties. Um, they're going all over the place. In, Richmond, town of Richmond is small. They don't have the exact same resources that city of Augusta has. So we need to plan for that because if a whole bunch of cyclists go down in town of Richmond, we need to make sure that we have resources available to help them. Um, back when I was living in North Carolina, we had a bike race where unfortunately survivors got hit and they had to bring in a bunch of ambulances. It happened. We don't want bad things to happen, but they do. That's why I have a job as firefighter in Burke, Wisconsin. Um, we try to make sure that whenever there's something might happen, try and plan. We can't let it scenario down. I can sit here and I can, I can go through a whole bunch of things that I think go wrong in this county. But we don't like, I don't like having the mentality that the sky is falling all the time because it doesn't get back to my message to you where we do have something that's not, like a flood or the storm. Um, so we try to make sure that we're reasonable where expectations go wrong or what we're doing. Does that make sense? Cool. So incident action plan helps provide that information. That way outside of the county comes in, we'll have the information that'll be pertinent to help them accomplish the, you know, the mission of the, of solving the incident. Um, it can be done before, or if they have incident, we want to multiple operation periods, like there's my Rob West of, um, by wildfires, we have multiple operational periods. So we're going to have multiple incident action plans to ensure that we're always working towards resolving events. So modular organization. We saw at the beginning, we have the incident command structure. Um, it's plug and play. I can make it as big as I need or I can make it as small as I need depending on the complexity of the incident. Um, it's also based upon the hazards. Um, one of the things like talk about when we go into a structure that's on fire, we always have a two-way travel. At the same time, usually I'm going to have someone watching behind me. Usually you're lieutenant or chief, if they decide to put their back on. Chief Grover is very good about putting their back on all the time. Uh, but when I'm in a house that's on fire, it's a very dangerous environment. We're going to want to try to ensure that, you know, the people that are charged are under control, remain. If I needed a whole group of people to clean a building, example, do I, you know, do I need a lot of supervision, but any one-on-one supervision with someone like that in that incident? No. So it's going to, large organizations can depend on what the hazard is, what we have going on. And we'll talk about standards in a second. Um, each element must have a person in charge. Um, needs to have someone that we can work to, we talk and we have the decisions. Um, as an incident grows bigger, more complex, decisions have to be made. The incident commander, if we're dealing with a large wildfire, they've got a lot of decisions to be made. Because he needs to make decisions on where the bathrooms go for the, you know, for the incident command post. No, that can be done by somebody else. Um, so we want to make sure we can break this out to ensure that people can make decisions of their own if they need to. So here we have, um, the progression of what incident structure metal plan. Here we have, say, for a house fire. We show up, we have incident commander, well, safety officer, well, the operations section. Usually we'll be like lieutenant is in charge of the firefighters inside the house. Um, as the fire grows in size, we might need to have different branches. We're going to have to have fire first on the first floor, the second floor, we might even have on the Alpha side. Uh, might even have on the Bravo side of the house where we brought it back, um, middle panel students. We might need to break up into more groups. It's a very big house. We might be bringing in strike teams or similar resources to help with certain things. We might need to bring in logistics section. It's a very, very, very big building. I'm going to need to say, hey, Chief Grover must say, hey, Teddy, you're my logistics guy. I need you to start thinking about what resources we're going to need here, um, to help with this fire. That's your responsibility. And I will sit there and I will manage those logistics coming in. So just have to worry about it. Planning section. Hey, we need someone that will start making up plans and start making up, uh, incident action plans so we can figure out what's going to happen in the future. And just sort of build from there. By incident admin. How important is that? Who likes getting paid? Who likes having money? Right here. It's often usually where the last decisions get filled, it's usually the most important. Uh, because documentation is key. I'm going to think about here for a second. Documentation is key, right? Because what does FEMA want? They want documentation on everything. Uh, right now, we're working for FEMA to try and, you know, deter a disaster that occurs more. Chief Grover, how many females have I sent you?
I don't know.
Um, documentation is key, um, especially if legal actions are taken after that because sometimes lawsuits merge, um, when documentation is key. So, so here we have, uh, again, just a quick little graphic of as an incident grows in complexity, um, resources are going to grow as well. And then our ICS structure is going to grow exponentially. So, so we mentioned earlier, state of control. One to five is a great number. Who knows how, on average, the total amount that people can remember word numbers. I know I just doubled that. How many numbers can a human brain handle at once? Usually, seven. I thought you said seven. So the human brain on average, you can remember about seven numbers. Now, there's people that are more gifted, there's people like me, they know number four, um, but usually it's about seven. During the incident, when things are going on, your brain capacity starts, you know, stuff's happening. They've done that one to five is the best ratio of state of control. It's usually one supervisor for five individuals, whatever. Does that make sense? Yeah. So, again, that also depends on what hazard is, if I'm going to fire, it's usually, we try to keep it a lot smaller than that. But as incident command structure grows, more responsibilities are thrown on people above. We need to start shutting it down to people underneath the incident command structure to ensure that stuff's not getting lost. We don't want to start forgetting stuff. We don't want to say, oh shoot, I knew I had to do that and I totally forgot I messed that up. Except they, maybe it might make the incident last longer if it works. So we're trying to ensure that we try to keep our state of control and know when to expand the incident command structure. Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah. So comprehensive resource management is another key. It's knowing what you have, knowing where your shortfalls are, which is a very key component. Um, if I, uh, I'm going to say the gust. If we have a large wildfire in the city of Augusta and it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and in my head, I go, I need twenty helicopters to come put this out. Does the city of Augusta have twenty firefight helicopters to put fire out? No. Do I have, does the city of Augusta have ten bus trucks to put out fire? No, we have one. But we also know the bigger this gets, we can't handle that. So it's called delay. Um, this is getting increasingly more important as smaller communities. I'm going to think about city for a second. Chief, Chief Dander is the next guy I want to hear. Um, Chief Dander set up a, she's a great guy. Mutual aid compactor. So Chief Dander, fire chief in, um, in Sydney, he sets up a compact between the area departments because he knows that he's one of two chiefs, you're captain there. He's the only chief, right? Believe me. Yeah. There's not an assistant chief right there. He's the only chief. He, he understands that when an incident happens, he needs a lot of help. He also may not be right there because he's also a bus guy. So he may depend on Chief Grover from Augusta showing up or Chief Nestor from Water will show up and help manage that incident. So they have a compact that the fire happens in the town of Sydney, and you're in that general area, that they're going to call a whole bunch of chiefs to, hey, we need to respond here. It's similar when we have fires as well. Um, we have a large, well, kind of things, uh, the last big fire in Augusta, um, big, uh, I'll use the northern half fire that we had nine years ago in Augusta. That was a very big fire. It was a multi-unit apartment complex. We don't have the capacity in Augusta to handle that because there's a lot of people within there. There's a lot of complex issues. We have to call in assistance, um, to help us. We have to call other departments there. Um, actually, the multi-fire, uh, we had a couple of years ago. It was on top of, um, East Side Hill where the multiple schools were being, uh, turning into apartments. We had an issue with water supply. The hydrants didn't, couldn't supply enough water to the fire trucks to put out the fire because they kept getting, you know, there just wasn't enough water. We actually had to do a tanker shuttle inside this city of Augusta to get enough water so the trucks to put this fire out. Um, I got put in charge of that. Why? I don't know. It just happened to be right in person, right place. But I was in charge of making sure that the tank, um, we put down had enough water to supply the fire trucks utilizing their big, you know, hoses to spray water down. Um, we have, there's a big area in Augusta that doesn't have hydrants. We rely on other towns to bring water to us in tankers. We know it's a shortfall, but we use mutual aid to help fix that. Did I explain that to them yet? Perfect. So integrated communications. Communication, again, is a very critical aspect of an incident. We want to make sure that the right information is getting to the incident commander and making decisions. Um, we want to ensure that we have a backup to the backup to the backup. Uh, if we, one system goes down, if cell phones stop working, you want to make sure that we have ability to make calls and usually like radios, um, you know, radios are a big backup. Um, we also have what's called Aries team. Um, it's an emergency team that we have that we can stand and utilize hand, um, that they can take over. They can actually send data packs, data packets of information around the state, around the country, around the globe. Um, there's actually a couple of people I know that very important in Katrina. They were assisting the coast guard from up here in state of Maine by sending packets of information down to Louisiana, uh, to help that. Really incredible stuff. Uh, but we want to make sure that we always have the ability to communicate. And on top of that, to make sure that people that are helping us have the ability to communicate with us. In the city of Augusta, we utilize a digital radio system. Everybody else in the county for fire service uses an analog. Now, we have a policy in place that if we have a fire, if we have an incident in the city of Augusta, for us, our first order of business is to switch to a tactical channel that's analog. That way anybody coming in can switch their radios to the exact same frequency and all operate together. And we have backup frequencies that if, hey, this is getting overloaded, we're going to switch the water supply to their own frequency that will not jumble the power for proceeding. So we'll all communicate clearly, clearly. Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah. Any other questions? You doing good? Okay. Again, now this is dry and modest. Alright, transfer command is one of the most dangerous times during an incident. Um, so we want to make sure that we have policies and procedures in place to ensure that there is a transfer command that we can effectively pass information that's relevant to the incident to the new people taking over. Now, most of the time, when we have a small incident here in the county, the fire chiefs, police chiefs, um, they're usually in the charge from start to the end. However, we're all human. If I don't feel well, I get sick, I got to go home, someone needs to make decisions. Always needs to be the incident commander. So we make sure that we have to. have a policy, a policy in place to transfer that information and provide details that nothing's missed. Uh, when I was in Colorado, we had a transfer of command where an incident management team, uh, was leaving, and then a new one was coming in. The new incident management team that came in, they had completely different ideas and ways that they wanted us to do things compared to the other team. Um, the other team, they're they're a little more safety oriented than some of us were like. Uh, they had a lot of policies and safety to say, they don't want you to do certain things, um, or we'll just have you stand back. But the other team was like, nope, we want you to go do this, we want you to go into the fire, and we want you to go into the fire, we want you to go be more aggressive with this fire to help it this out. Um, so biggest problem with transfer command, nothing was, we don't want to miss anything. We don't want to have any gaps, uh, when we lose accountability, it's something that's missed, and someone gets hurt or offended. Makes sense? So chain of command and duty command. Chain of command is the border line of authority within ranks and incident management organization. Again, we're always going to have someone at the top and the people underneath. But we have unity of command, means that each individual has a designated supervisor. I'm always going to go to Chief Grotter because he's higher than me in the incident command system, right? In our organizational rank structure. However, Chief Grotter has people against him too. So now we're using a program right now. Uh, but there's always somebody higher to report to. So the transfer information is pretty frequently distributed. If I've got something, I know I need to talk to this person, I know who that person is. That information is important, they know that they need to, it's the next person above them. Makes sense? Cool. Now, this is what we're doing for a loop. Unified command is a separate thing. Unified command is where no one jurisdiction, agency, or organization has primary authority to the resources on an incident. So, the best example of this is most recently back in August, we had the plane crash in Lister. Um, we had the sheriff's department on scene providing security. That's their mission, is they want to ensure the scene is secure, that no one's going to mess with it or tamper it. We had the fire department on scene, ensure that nothing catches fire or gets worse. We had main T E P who's on scene worried about obviously the fire mishaps and the plane crash. Then we had the haznet team that was there, that were worried about, hey, we want to ensure that nobody gets, you know, contaminated, or we don't want this to get worse. So who's ultimately in charge of this? We all went together. Uh, we all helped make decisions, we all came together as a group, um. Sheriff Basin was there, the base was there, Russ always started, this is what's going on, and we're basically unified command. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to this thing, what we're doing, but this is where I stand, we've got to follow us. Um, and we all have to work. Unified command is great because there's multiple agencies involved that have different objectives. Uh, they want to ensure that they keep control of it. As a firefighter, I don't want to try and take you in a police incident because I just don't have the knowledge. I'm going to depend on that police officer, that police chief to provide the information, make the decisions, one of his guys, and you can basically stay safe. Makes sense? Cool. All right, dispatching department and accountability. Again, like I said, talked about earlier, accountability is a huge factor when it comes to incident safety. Uh, making sure that we know where our resources are, um, to ensure they're safe, but on top of that, knowing where they are in the county. Uh, back in nine eleven, there was a huge problem of people self-dispatching to New York. What that would do is that would leave their own team as vulnerable to incidences, disasters that now they couldn't handle because their air fire trucks, their fire department sent someone to New York when they didn't need to be there. Uh, unfortunately, recently in this state, um, the shooting in Lewiston, there was some of that. You know, we're all the type of people that we want to help, we want to, you know, we think we can help make this situation better by our presence or by doing our actions, by me performing as a paramedic, uh, but there's sometimes where inaction is the better choice. Um, during the Lewiston shooting, the chief, the chiefs and I in the area were all in good text. We knew where we were supposed to go. We knew we're, we had sub-trucks in Lewiston that were assisting, uh, we knew that uh, Delta had brought on extra paramedics, extra trucks to help cover our area in case something else happened. Um, we knew what was going on around. Thankfully, our county, um, self-dispatched to, um, Lewiston. Everybody there was, was there because they got requested. Um, Winthrop actually sent a couple of trucks, and Chief Devissi was down there, and there was a great resource to that. Um, but on top of that, we also need to maintain accountability. When I go off west to Colorado, the incident note needs to know where I am, know where I'm coming from, that they can expect my arrival. Pretty good there? Yeah. Incident facilities and location. Um, when I was up in Quebec, uh, we were in a very, very remote northern part of Quebec. Uh, it was logging country. They have the resources, infrastructure up there to handle um, five thousand people operated out of a logging camp? No. So we need to make sure, we need to build, you know, incident locations and facilities, we need to break the incident command post. Uh, the Quebec government, uh, I'm not going to try and say the French, but the Sufu, the Sufu, uh, again, the French spelling same, I'm not going to try. But they basically, they have giant trailers that they will truck up, they've got man trailers, they've got air operation trailers, they've got sleeping trailers. They have, uh, four beds to a trailer. They're great. I'm not sleeping on the, I'm not sleeping on the cold hard ground. I have a nice trailer, I'm comfortable, I'm getting rested, ready for the next day to help put this fire out. Um, but it's important that when we go into the national response framework, it there has the terms that are standardized to help ensure that we're all on the same page when we build incident facilities, um, how we should do staging areas, uh, how we can help develop plans to create mass, as a triage areas, points of distribution, how we should have, what resources we should have if we have to open an emergency shelter. Is that accurate? Pretty good? Yeah. A little less than half way through it. I appreciate everybody holding out. All right, information that tells us the answer. Again, information is key in an incident to make sure the incident commander can make decisions. Um, we have to know, we have to develop ways of determining what is important information and what is not important information. Um, during the Lewiston shooting, they're getting a lot of information, keep the calling in saying, I saw so-and-so driving down the interstate in New Hampshire. They need to go through that, and you just get that, and there's a lot of things that need to do to ensure that some corporate information goes up to the incident commander so they can make decisions. Um, so, I talked about ICS structure a little bit earlier on, and this is our, um, our basic, our four basic, uh, sections that we break out in. So this differs from day-to-day organizational structures. Um, the ICS positions are unique, um. I'm not playing by shape and order, and this is a bad. Chief Grotter is a great incident commander. However, as things progress, you, he may not want to be, he's not going to want to have to deal with logistics. He's going to want to pick somebody that deals with logistics all the time. So, I'm a lowly firefighter, paramedic in the city of Augusta, I'm a lowly emergency planner, but my skillset, my knowledge base is in logistic management, where I do to help manage things. Even though I don't have rank, I can still fill that position because I have the knowledge base. That make sense? So you're going to want to pick and choose how you fill that structure based on what people's skills are, what they're good at. Um, I am not good in finance and admin, I will look at it right now. Uh, and I make it self, Excel sheet, absolutely. But if you want to be in technical members and try to figure stuff out, I'm not your guy. Uh, I would happily work in logistic management. Uh, but someone I'm going to think about Debbie for a second. Uh, she's the town manager, she's probably great with numbers. She would be great to have in the finance admin section because she understands how budgets work, how plans work, how people's work, um, she'd be great in that. That make sense? Yeah. So, at the onset of the incident, there always has to be someone that is in charge. Usually the first arriving person is usually the initial incident commander. As time goes on, there will be change, I'll move that to second. Uh, but there's always somebody in charge. Now, if we're dealing with a very, very large brush fire in the city of, or most of the state, most fire chiefs in the state aren't going to handle that, we're going to have to call in a special team, call the incident management team. Um, that's when we're going to, that's when we get into the transfer command and delegation authority stuff, over to a later. But at the end of the day, we want to have the most qualified person to be the incident commander. Um, there's times where it may not be the fire chief, they might be the police chief, that might be the Department of Environmental Protection and say, hey, we're going to be in charge because we've got the most experience in this. So the incident commanders will, there's overall leadership for the incident response, they're going to be in charge. Um, they're obviously going to receive policy corrections from you folks, but at the end of the day, they're, you know, they've got to make decisions to help resolve the issue. Um, they're going to establish incident objectives, how we're going to resolve this, they're going to direct the deployment, um, to direct the development of the incident action plan as needed. Ultimately, they're going to make sure that everybody's operating in a safe manner. And they're going to delegate authority to others if they get overwhelmed. They're also going to be the point of contact between the E O C and Joint Information Center and the M A T groups. And they're going to provide information to external and internal stakeholders. Now, your folks will, you're going to be telling the fire chief, hey, this is what our concerns are, this is what the people I represent, this is what their concerns are. What can you tell me how you're trying to mitigate that? There's in the M I M's, I C S world, there's always going to be a conversation, there's going to be communication that way, expectations are hundreds of them, you know. Uh, you're also going to provide policy guidance, um. One of the things that, uh, especially during COVID, there's policies that can be adjusted all the time, uh, especially the spending policies. Our spending policy at the time was a certain amount, made it wait a certain time for, it was a higher one, I'm just going to throw the numbers out. They'd spend ten thousand dollars on personal effects and equipment. Well, the policy at the time was they had to wait two weeks to get approval from the finance director of the city. At the end of the two weeks, that equipment is gone, someone has already gobbled it up someplace else. So they had to get such admission and change the policy to make sure that they can get the personal protective equipment, make sure I stay safe during that, during COVID. Um, so that falls on you folks. Uh, there's certain legal authorities that I cannot do, and it falls to you. So delegation of authority. This is in here because you've seen it, especially in significant, he comes in, but a lot of times, this is already in place. There's already statutes, statutes, statute, statutes uh, are in place that regulate who's in charge when, what Chief Grotter's duties and responsibilities are. There's also job descriptions, policies, um, that break that down as well. You guys are in charge of those policies and those job descriptions. That falls on you guys. And yes, um. So, the incident management roles, incident commander, again, if you're in the scene, we'll talk about emergency operations center here in a second, but they're going to be the conduit to help get more resources to the scene. Their joint information system, they're going to establish communication between incident personnel, public, and then the senior officials, you folks, and the M A T groups, they're going to provide incident commander with the authority to do his job, especially if the third, a third party is coming in. Uh, help sort of shape the mission and strategy direction, and give, provide policy to help the incident commander do his job better. So here we have the command staff. These are the people that report directly to the incident commander. So usually we'll have a public information officer, that's the person who's going to, uh, be the face-to-face person with the media, because obviously, incident commander, the last thing they want to do is talk to the media, right? How often do you like talking to news? Would you rather someone else do it than you? Yeah. Uh, so we want to make, you know, help take a load off, and it doesn't work with the media, that public information officer can develop their, their message, get that out to the public. Or liaison officer, that way he can, he or she can talk to other agencies that are coming in to make sure that they have the right resources, the right equipment. I mean, the safety officer, that's going to be the person who's in charge of the overall safety of the incident. And then here we have our general staff, and I think I've already beaten that horse to death. So, I C S, what they do, is the operations section, they're going to develop the tactics organization and direct all resources to carry out its action plan. This is where, this is usually the biggest section, um, when we look at the I C S structure. Um, these are the people that are boots in the ground, they're going out, they're, you know, they're cutting the trees down, they're cutting the fire line, they're pulling hose, they're spraying water on the fire. Um, the planning section, they're going to be the ones to say, hey, looking toward the future, what am I going to need? Once they figure it out, then they're going to go to the logistics section and say, hey, this is what we need, what can you get? Logistics can go and say, okay, I can give you this, this, and this, but this asset here is going to take two weeks to get here. Okay, we may do what we have and sort of develop a plan from there. And again, finance and admin, they're going to sort of track all the costs and documentation that belongs to the incident. So there's multiple incident management teams, people that do this for a living, that they go from incident to incident to incident throughout the year, that they just manage disasters. Um, F D and Y, they've got a couple of incident management teams, the state, we have our own. The county used to have our own, but it came on, we kind of disbanded it because it didn't get used and nobody wanted to be a part of it, so. Uh, but the state has a new team that we can bring in if needed. All right, so, what are some things that make incidences more complex than Kenneb County? The size of the county, is Kenneb County a big or small county? Big, of course, biggest in state. Uh, what's the other things? The river, that's a huge one, that creates more problems than it really helps anything. Uh, that's a huge, uh, complexity as well. Anyone else? Well, it's a multiple jurisdictions, absolutely, um. There's a lot of agencies within Kenneb County. Uh, there's a lot of there's a lot of sandboxes. People like their sandboxes, they don't want to get away in control because they like their little sandbox. That creates issues within the county. What else?
Turnpike.
Turnpike. What travels on the turnpike?
There runs.
Big trucks, what are those big trucks carrying? Oil, dangerous things, everything. There is a lot of hazardous material that goes up and down the interstate all the time. So that definitely creates more complex, um, interstate gets shut down, heading where it's at, it can be a long detour. All right, so how do, how long does, uh, complex incidents last? Don't know. It could be a long time. Are we still dealing with COVID stuff today? Oh, yes, absolutely. So a complex incident, a complex incident can last a very long time. There's still people that are still trying to recover from Katrina, how many years ago that was, they're still living in the, in the fairs. Um, how long typically do we need to be self-sufficient as a municipality and organization, or like county? Best guess? Three days, seventy-two hours. Uh, typically, it takes anywhere from forty, forty-eight, seventy-two hours for federal assets, federal, um, systems to arrive. But how many will this be total? The F M I trailer is gone. So recovery, as we're, you know, getting more and more into, you know, disaster happening in our area, recovery is extremely complex. There's always going to be lingering pieces of recovery that people just can't get over. There's emotional traumas from dealing with, uh, you know, certain disasters that take years and years and years to get over. So, the point of all this is, we're in this for a long while. We're going to be making decisions for a long time. There's your predecessors down the line, they might be dealing with the December storm for years to come. So this is an example of expanding incident. And you're going to pretty good understand this? Yeah. So I'll skip that. Wow. So here we have unified command, again. On the right, we're visual, we've got multiple agencies that help towards a common goal, help provide direction to the responders. We also have area command. If we have multiple incidents going on, that's going to suck up a lot of resources. So we want to make sure that each incident As incident commander, we may have, we may want to have an area commander who's in charge of looking over all of incidents. Sure, what resources are going to go where, where they can be prioritized. Um, so that way, this incident over here is sucking up all the fire trucks. Let's take away from the response of the fire over here, makes sense? Yeah. Anybody have any questions over that unit? That's the longest unit, it's the most in-depth unit, they have. That unit has its own I C S class, so that level there. So emergency operations centers. Does the town Winterfield have an emergency operation center? Yes, it does. See Augusta, we have emergency, every town theoretically should have an emergency operation center. Because you need to have a single point and that way, if an incident happens, you call, know where to meet and have discussions and. Support the incident commander. So. Here we have, this is a graphic that shows the grand scale of everything. There we go, the bottom left, you have the incident commander, you have the incident, uh, response. And then as we move up and to the right, we have different groups that get involved from the state, local to the state level, then to the federal level. Uh, emergency operations sit right, right above. Uh, we also have state emergency operations centers, um, the state E O C here, uh, Augusta. In city, you can also go with the places, but for the most part, the state has their E O C right in Augusta. Um, now we have this incident going on, like storms, they can activate it and they bring all their people in. To help manage, to ensure that the proper resources are going to the right place. Uh. We've also got the national organization, uh, national operations center, which is. They can provide resources, we can call them, there's other organizations throughout the country that are ready to go to help. So the E O C function is to collect, analyze and share information. Uh, they're going to be the single point, we can all come and have conversations, they're going to support the incident commander. It also could be making plans, incident action plans, uh, they could be coordinating, um, specifics, uh, resources that come and help the incident commander. E O C organizational structures are also very similar to the incident commander structures. Um. Usually you're going to have a person in charge of the E O C, and then there'll be different responsibilities. There are a million and one ways to set up your E O C. Um. There's, again, E M A class, E M A class about setting up E O Cs. The important thing I want to take away is that they're very important, especially as things are starting to more hectic outside. Be brought, bring people in to have those conversations, face-to-face. Who likes having certain conversations over the phone, or via text, stuff getting misconstrued, oh yeah, face-to-face. So the benefits of the E O C. It helps establish a shared situational picture, that's very important, I mean, everybody understands what's going on. Um, helps simplify information verification, that way if I have somebody called in and says, hey Teddy, I assume the police department is, you know, rolling in on tanks, I mean. How is that possible? If I went, the police chief sitting around next to me, I can go, hey, you guys are running with tanks? No, okay, that, no, that's not right. Uh, so it helps verify information. Uh, if we have to facilitate for long-term operations, um, we can help get that done. Um. That way, as the time goes on, we can help foster relationships with the agencies and know what their capabilities are. Uh, increasing continuity. Getting the same message out to the people, having the same, uh, thought process to ensure that we're working towards resolution of this. So the E O Cs, the senior officials slash multiple agency coordination groups, again, there're going to be a lot of talking back and forth. The M A T group again, hey, providing policy for the E O Cs, hey, this is. Typically don't like to put a dollar on disasters, but hey, we really have the budget, this, this is not, try to not spend too much money. Alright, so quickly we go over M A T groups again, uh, real quick, uh, again, it's a. It's a, provides policy guidance. Um, there was a situation where a tornado came through a town in Tennessee, uh, even brought in trailers. Someone came up to the town and said, hey, you can't have these trailers here. And like, we mean, no, you, you can't have those trailers here, we have an ordinance that says no trailers in this area, you can't have trailers here. He went, oh. Right. So the M A T group had to help develop a policy stating, hey, for the duration of this incident, you know, we're going to allow trailers in this area for this amount of time to help the residents. So those who are families. Makes sense? Yeah. Um, the M A T groups are often comprised of like officials, like yourself, senior decision makers, senior public safety officials. High-level social media experts, uh, people that are very good in their craft, that know the time, usually this would be specific state agencies like May D P. Um. Uh, war in service, things that make her, that can help provide, uh, better explanations. Uh, again, here's the, another slide, again, right, it's the same here, this is your roles. See anybody have any questions on senior officials' roles? In incident or assisting the E O C. Why beat this one pretty good? Yeah. So operational priorities, yeah, first and foremost, save lives. And after that, we're going to make sure that people's property are protected, and then the environment. Uh, after that, stabilize the incident, provide basic human needs, uh, ensure that everybody has what they need to continue their, uh, their daily life. Uh, restoring essentially utilities, uh, to ensure that people have power, uh, because obviously. You know, my kids need their tablets working all the time, so they stay, they stay entertained, power is very important, so. Self care. Uh. Restoring themselves a program functions, there are people that are socially and economically disadvantaged that need meals on wheels, or need those programs. Um, to help them carry their daily lives. Uh, and then coordinating appropriately with stakeholders, uh. There's multiple stakeholders throughout your, your region of the county that. Have a saying, hey, we want to see this sort of change, we need this, we need R and D addressed because we support the least people. And there's also many other, other political implications to that as well. So the joint information. The joint information system, uh, here we have a graphic, again, it's just. This is a concept of making sure that everybody's in communication with each other, and right information is being passed to the right people. Um, and then we're also making sure we're getting that to the people, uh, the general public. Usually, if there's a void of information. Thanks to social media, they will happily fill that void with whatever information that might be available. Uh. More recently in Maui, um. They didn't do a great job of getting information out to the public. And the pattern is it go to the trust with the people. To the, to the government, so when the government finally came to their help, they're like, nah, we don't trust you. And that really degenerates the recovery in long term, so we want to ensure that we're getting the right information, right time to the right people. So, again, public information officer, are you pretty good at understanding what they do? Yeah. And then again, here's, it's a system, it's not just facility, it's a system, it's process that we develop and we work. Uh, the way we work through this too is, again, having me come out and talk to you, that way you know, hey, Teddy's the E O C, I know who Teddy is. I know who I can talk to. So here we see this again, anybody got any questions over this? Yeah. We're almost done, we're getting there. So preparedness. How do we, there are disasters, how do we, how do we start that process? So a lot of this comes down to preparedness. First, it takes a whole community, everybody needs to be involved, from. People that you support, that collect you, to the people running the surface, firefighters, paramedics, police officers. Department of Public Works are getting increasingly brought into the fold because they're very important, um, we need to all have a set. So one of the things that we're doing as a county this year is we're doing what's called a THIRAS P R, Threat and Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment. Basically, what do we need prepared for, what could happen within this county? What capabilities do we have to make these, um. To help the things go bad? What are our current capabilities, what can we not do? Uh. How do we fix these gaps to ensure that we can provide the services to, you know, our community members? Um, so this is a process going to go on this year, uh, it's been a while since we've done a THIRA. Our office is, I'm working on getting a plan together that we throw up a year, we're going to be holding meetings with all of the towns. The THIRA is very important for also not only our hazard mitigation plan, we'll talk about here in a second, but also for other aspects of homeland security. There's homeland security grants that we have to the THIRA for, or get money back in our communities, especially with Augusta, Sydney, uh. H S G P money was bought, uh, just recently bought a theater for the town. So. Very important.
Yeah, because me being here tonight is also part of.
Absolutely, yes.
I'm pretty.
So, uh, another aspect is we have plans for hazard mitigation plan, uh, who here remembers moving your hazard mitigation plan a few years ago? Okay. Our hazard mitigation plan is very, very important. Uh. If ever you have a disaster, like say, I don't know, when the floodstorm comes through, and you need to make improvements in your town, do you want to pay for those? If the federal government said, hey, we've got money to give you guys to make improvements, which doesn't happen again, we should happily take that?
Yes.
Absolutely, that's what hazard mitigation plan is for. So we're, the hazard mitigation plan is reviewed and updated every five years, it recently updated back in two thousand and one. Um, however, they just changed the guidance on how the mitigation plan, um, needs to be last year, so now we are starting that process, the THIRA process. I mean, it all comes together to ensure that we can, in the next couple of years, redo our hazard mitigation plan to be more effective and usable for the community. Uh. Do you guys have emergency plans for the town? Yeah. That's, that helps us here to be prepared. Um. I know everybody, our, the police departments, they have S O Gs, S O Ps, state operating guidelines and policies, uh, we also have the local emergency planning commission. Who's that is? I don't check the other guys, the local emergency planning commission has a group of individuals that meet quarterly, that we are, represent, um. Individual, uh, companies that have hazardous materials, um, that. May hold extremely hazardous substances on their sites that can definitely affect the community. Um. Does anybody know what anhydrous ammonia is? Anhydrous ammonia.
Oh, I didn't.
It's a very toxic gas. There's a few.
Ah.
Uh, there's a few places we have in the county. All of them, Kent Hill, or two places on top of it that they don't. What's that? Yes. Uh, there's a leak that's going to impact the community, uh, especially like there's one also in, um. Uh, Gardner as well, um. We get together, we discuss to ensure that, you know, we're, these people are doing the right thing they should be, but also we have the plan, like if there's a leak, how do we handle this? Um, so, yeah. One of the, one, just a few things to do. We also have our local community leaders meeting, uh, I will be sending an email out here shortly, in the next few days. Uh, we have a local community leaders meeting, that we bring in local community leaders, town managers, fire chiefs, police chiefs, um. Selectmen, that way you can come and you can get together, have a conversation, figure out what the needs of the county are, how can our office assist you better? Uh, because it's very important. Um, we. Last year, our work, our work is always to be better for the county and helping you guys. Um, establishing communication information systems, um, we're always working to increase our, uh, regular communications within the county. But also cybersecurity, uh, that's also very important, usually in the, uh. The H S G P grants, cybersecurity is always a big, hot topic within that. Um, last year, see Augusta bought some stuff for cybersecurity, it also bought, used some of their money to, uh, update their. Uh, training as well, which I think we must possibly have to do that. Uh, so it's great, it's to ensure that, you know, we're doing, we're supposed to, that way we can. There is a breach, um, in the city of Augusta again, as it can, uh, where our, our computer system gets locked down and it held ransom. That, that happened in the city of Augusta, is it three or four years ago? Um, that we have ways to get around and to ensure that we're continuously. Providing a service, like dispatch, um, whether community services, make sure they don't stay online for too long. Uh. So, training, let me skip ahead a couple of slides. So, here is the required training. For I C S, for town members, as senior officials, you are very lucky, this is the only class you have to take.
Class.
Oh. Just be happy you're not the county emergency director, because you're just taking everything, uh, but. Here you can see, obviously, there's lots of classes out there that break this down to you further than I do tonight, um. You don't have to take these, but I would encourage you all to take these, take them. They. Are they enjoyable? Yeah. Cannot, I cannot be conscious if you're saying that they're worth to take because they are boring, however, there are full information that definitely help you understand the process. Because again, I'm always scratching the surface right now, we, we haven't even like started to make a shine yet, we really haven't.
That annual training?
It's all online, yes.
I mean, yearly?
Um, no, so the way that this works is there's a letter after the, the class, so it's I C S one hundred, they move to I C S one hundred B. Every five years roughly before updating the class, um, you have to have one iteration behind, one letter behind. So if we're in I C S one hundred B right now, you have to add an A. It's a standard version. It's very difficult with that, but, um, later on, they get like, I C S one hundred F, you can't be like, oh, you're online, makes sense? Any questions over this?
Okay, time's up. Seven minutes, I think.
Seven twenty, oh, alright. Let me question one you guys, does anybody have any questions?
I think we could, the Ironman, there's a real life scenario. I think there's all of that, when there are so many towns and multiple departments. Did you run in hotels, did you raise, because there are ten companies?
So if it were to be, it's a unified command, it's pretty formidable, sitting in a room. I've done H O E M S, emergency stop, the law enforcement representative, they have a law enforcement, I'm in, I'm getting, and they're talking to all their people. So anything that happens is coming into that room, and then we just put it away.
We did, but only you and me.
It's, it's break that even more, you have water operations, you have people running, and then you have the road owner.
Okay, we see.
But it's a little, it's a little on.
Yeah.
Yes. And I was sort of assured because we're going to take a vacation after, however, I took a vacation week before, so I'm going to need time to always remember.
So you just explained that the incident, incident commander is right here?
So for Ironman, yes.
Oh, for the Ironman, okay, but in the case of municipalities, um, so if you have an incident, and you had shown one of those other slides with, um, I think you had like the safety officer, the public affairs. And the liaison officer, and then the subgroups underneath, the finance, um, all of the planning and operations, so, uh, in a municipality. Is that like the police department, fire department, is that still?
It's going to depend on the situation.
Right.
Because obviously, if it's a. An active shooter or, um, a law enforcement incident, the fire chief is probably not the best person in charge. Nothing against Chief Brooks, he's a great guy, I love him, uh, but unfortunately, he's going to have the best knowledge to handle a situation, um, and more in your lives.
And so given each of those situations, um, the appropriate incident commander probably has that incident, those, um, incident action plans. Probably in place already, so each of our departments have those plans.
So like, well, there are certain ways how to handle things and certain policies, um. Let's break it down that way. Usually we'll break those down into standard operating guidelines of, hey, we're up to a scene, you know, try to maintain two in, two out for the fire department. G M S has a, or fire, or district alone, wave them, they don't know how to speak to them, but, uh, yeah, we're usually breaking them like, stand out with a badass.
And just so the council knows, Chief Brooks is in fact our emergency management coordinator for the town. And most of the times when we initiate I C S, he's going to be the incident commander, so for instance, when we had the storm back last month. He was the point person, uh, who was mostly coordinating the responses involving public works, fire department, police.
Um, what did that, pertains to this specific detail on that, does he have a free plan? For disasters that could occur within our community, uh, where we can. Draw from resources, hey, you know, the town has a couple bulldozers or a, uh, you know, an excavator, but we might need six or seven more. Or we have a train coming to the town that's full of plastic materials.
Yeah, so there is actually an emergency management plan, uh, in place. Yeah, so there is actually an emergency management plan, uh, in place, probably needs to be updated. Uh, Chief Brooks and I have talked about that on a couple of different occasions. Uh, but just to be clear, what, what Ted's been talking about, like an incident action plan is something that would be crafted at the beginning of an incident in order to sort of lay out the plan for, for what you're going to be through, through the course of that incident, which is the, the emergency operations plan can be sort of a, a predictor for doing that, but depending upon the majorities of each incident, you're going to have your individual incident, uh, action plan.
I get that. I, my question really, uh, is from a pre-planning standpoint, what if? And as a fire, uh, experiment, if we fire, thank you. Um, you know, you always pre-plan for, uh, incidents that can happen within your community and where do you get those resources? Typically, they're handled, if you need bulldozers or excavators, the finance person handles that, has a list of people that they can draw from to bring in that equipment that's needed.
Yeah, and, and actually that is to be your logistics chief, you bring in, and then the finance chief to make sure that, you know, they're getting all the invoices and following up with whatever funding this may seem to come, NIMA and FEMA, so. And so Dan just walked in. So Dan, there was a question about our, uh, emergency operations plan. You want to briefly, uh, address that?
Sure. Um, so, as the emergency management director, I guess ultimately, um, I end up becoming responsible for that and working within the framework of the police, fire, EMS. So I kind of double duty is running the fire department while also doing EMA stuff. So, the bulk of that emergency management stuff comes after as far as paperwork that I'm dealing with as we speak, and that type of stuff. Um, but we also have certain times during the year where we pre-plan, we're discussing generators, um. We have like traffic control equipment, we have a bunch of shared assets that we use also that we learned from high dogs. We have a situation, ice storm being a big one where we learn, we need this, we need that, we need this, and slowly work to fill that stuff in, so. Um, it sounds crazy, but there's a lot of redundancy sometimes. It has to be put into place so that we're always helping the project, so. Um, and we had a meeting just, whatever it was, a couple of weeks ago, after the last storm, that one kind of snuck up on me, um, maybe some other people as well. So, we react very quickly like we always do, start firing around EMS police. But the duration of that one, um, took us a little while to stay on top, but I'm not sure if I'm answering what you're asking, but.
So one of the things we're also working on this return is expanding our county resource best. So that says, hey, this town of Winter has five bulldozers, five front owners. City Augusta has five bulldozers, five front owners. The town of Sydney only has one, um, that would be a general understanding of what's this to the town. Uh, that way, if it does happen, we can call and say, hey, um, there's a fresh fire in Augusta, can we borrow a couple of bulldozers as an example? That answer your question a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and there may be some resources available to us in the near future, just talking with Brian Shaw, who's the resilience coordinator for K D C O G at the back of the room, and Katie Koch, her background is in emergency planning. And Katie Koch is applying for some federal, uh, funds in order to provide emergency planning services to twelve communities uh, within the C O G, uh, service area over the next thirty years. So, that might be something that we can help to supplement, uh, the plans that Dan has worked on in the past.
Yeah, I, kind of.
Sort of a follow-up, uh, to Bruce, only with the different resources. Bruce talked about, uh, physical resources such as bulldozers, and I'm thinking about human resources. Um, would it behoove an emergency management agency to make a list of citizens that have skill sets that would be available to help the emergency?
So, we use a lot of outside contractors. This last storm, I think we used, uh, three logging tree-type contractors, and we also had the use of construction people. Uh, most of that was all hired by Matt, he's the road guy. We talk a lot during the storm and right after the storm, so, um. Prior individuals can be tricky when it comes to liabilities and injuries and that type of stuff. So we generally try to work off a list of contractors that we already have liability insurance and information from, they're already somewhat vetted. And Matt uses them sometimes year-round for a tree here or there, but we call them all in, we have a storm like we did the other day, so. I, I think getting outside of predetermined contractors and so forth, it gets a little tricky. The other hard thing is just to be very clear about storms like this, is every town is equally impacted. So getting mutual aid or getting a lot of assistance from another neighborhood can be very difficult because they have the same problems we do. But we still work together, uh, especially around town lines, things like that.
I, I direct the traffic on two or two, you can have that go.
But to add on to what you were saying, the biggest expense is a liability aspect. Uh, if someone gets hurt, who's going to pay for that? Does the town want to incur that cost? Probably not. So, eh, well, yes, great to have a great li, a big list of who's qualified and what, where. Unless they're affiliated with, you just see like the fire department or EMS department, the police department, public works. We just kind of utilize what we know, which, I think that answered your question.
Thank you.
Very much.
Any other questions? Any other questions from staff, any visiting staff?
So the question is, is my presentation available online? The email version is yes, fine, I can send it to you if you'd like.
You can get a lot of this invasion from the people outside. Yeah, probably do, you know, around, there's a lot of radiation.
Do you want a break? Let's go.
So, just to finish up, uh, there's a sign-in sheet going around, if you know, the sign that just goes, it was here. Uh, there's also invalidation, um, that goes along with it. I would really appreciate if you could fill it out. Please be as brutally honest as possible. I take all feedback, um, personally and cry at night. But I, I really do appreciate, since, you know, I want to ensure that you know this, that you guys understand what's going on. Um, so I appreciate all feedback.
Teddy, Marshall?
Yes.
I don't know which one you prefer, Teddy or Marshall, but thank you very much for coming in. And, uh, I think I'll look forward to hearing a little bit more on your threat hazard identification risk assessment as we move forward with that.
There'll be a lot of them as well with us, I promise.
Great, thank you very much. We don't have any objections to moving forward? Alright, we are going to move forward to, uh, item zero zero five. Thank you very much for the staff that came and joined us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Discussion of potential issue, uh, potential uses of the community resilience partnership grant funds in consideration of a C R P resolution. Um, so, we do have, um, memorandum, this is basically kind of just going over the community resilience partnership program. Um, program assists communities in reducing carbon emissions, trans- transitioning to clean energy, and becoming more resilient to the effects of climate change, including extreme weather and flooding. Uh, if accepted in the program, the town will receive about fifty thou, will receive fifty thousand dollars to help fund its resilient activities, and that will increase to a hundred and twenty-five thousand if you partner with a neighboring community. Um, I don't know if we want to go into any further discussion of it, or if we want to just.
So, so for the audience, I think it would be helpful with running this tape, a brief overview of the community resilience program and the sort of efforts that the program will find. But, because it's not just everything, it's got a sort of bit into us with a big category. Brian Shaw, she is the resilience coordinator for the Kennebec Valley County.
Hi there, it's Tanya Wicker. It's Tanya Wicker, that's easier.
Brian.
Hello, like I said, my name is Brian Shaw, and I'm the community resilience coordinator for K D C O G. And as part of my role there is to assist communities in enrolling in the community resilience partnership or the C R P, plus program for. Um, this program is run by the governor's office of policy innovation and the future. And the goal is to help communities become more resilient to climate change, adopt green energy principles, and just be more resilient in general. As a, my role in this program is as a service provider. So every time there was an opportunity, I applied for a grant to the state to help five communities enroll. And so through that process, I work with towns to complete the four enrollment steps, as well as apply for the first community action grant. So that's what we are here to do, is look at our options for applying for this grant. The grant can be up to fifty thousand dollars for one community. The grant must align seventy-two action items within the main one-way climate action plan. Um, if it aligns with them, there is no match. So it's just the application and power to ask for the community to submit. The community can apply for other resilience type funding, however, there would be a match dependent on the community's, um, social vulnerability index and obligation. So it can be anywhere from ten to twenty percent match of your grant funding. If Winter wanted to work with neighboring communities, it can be up to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and can work with up to four neighboring communities, but that doesn't change the amount that's available.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so, Eric, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, who's overseeing the application? Who's making the decisions as far as applications or accepting of the program?
So it's more just an enrollment into the program. We submit the four steps to the governor's office of policy innovation of the future. Um, and there's a subset of that office, the community resilience partnerships. And so once that is accepted and acknowledged, then we can apply for the community action grant. The grant needs to be decided on by the town, what you will ask in the money, in the application. And then after that, again, it goes back to go with, as to if you get the grant and how much it will fund.
Um, for the partnering with neighboring communities, can we add any of these projects?
Yes, it has to align with at least one of the list of community actions. There's seventy-two items that come from the main one-way climate action plan, and it has to align with at least part of them. And as long as it does, so we can apply for with other communities.
Another question.
I missed that one. Um, which town official in Winter will be the team leader for this program?
Fred?
Just reading through some of the, I value, self-evaluation here. And I, uh, the land use policy improvement, you know, the, the, and the open space planning, which is stuff we've discussed extensively about the future land use ordinance. Um, I want to make sure that we're not still pushing for the stuff that we've said we're not going to push for in the future land use ordinance.
No, no, and that's not an effort that would be, uh, planned by us anymore.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
One, one other thing is, uh.
Can you speak to options?
The, the microphone. Uh, you want us to know, go ahead. Yeah, there we go, let's cut it out. So, the other thing I wanted to ask about is reading through some of these other, uh, answers, the, uh, number six, I guess, on minimizing risk exposure to hazards, uh, community is aware of increasing events, taking steps such as generators and critical facilities. What do we know about that? I, that's the first I've heard about that. Are we putting generators in?
No, but there has been some discussion, you know, uh, interestingly, this school campus doesn't have any generators, so if the power goes out, school's over with for the day. So that's something that the school district has looked at in the past as a possibility. But, uh, we haven't talked about that in, in the other municipal facilities.
Anyone else? Alright, uh, so at this time, I'd like to open it up for local members of the town to come up and speak. If you have any input regarding, um, the community resilience program. Uh, I would encourage that we keep it to about three minutes or so, um, just for the sake of time. But please come to the podium, state your name.
Is it on? I'm almost on the desk, and we're analogous for the Coxey Watership District. So you see, and this is the document we gave you, that we had a couple of ideas for use of the community resilience partnership grant. And we're going with our number one top priority, which is to make improvements to the Annabiscuit Lake Dam. And it's my understanding that you have a picture of high water at the Annabiscuit Dam when water falls into the health dam. And that you also have graphs that you might with a light for say, what's this? But it shows a, um, completely failed drawdown attempt at the Annabiscuit Lake Dam due to the limitations of the structure. And the second graph underneath is a totally successful drawdown event at the Coxey Lake Dam. Because that dam has a lot of gates and a lot of capacity to protect water. So, um, what the Coxey Watership District is proposing is that the town of Winter, go in jointly with the town of Monmouth to apply for a community resilience partnership grant to address damage movements. This would alleviate property damage around the lakes, uh, reduce erosion, protect water quality. And it would meet names climate action goal, where in this information that you got, in quotes, it says, to become more resilient to climate change effects, including extreme weather and flooding, end quote. So, there's a flooding problem now in Annabiscuit Lake, and there's an extreme weather problem now too. And I, I'm not going to read all of this because it will take too much time, and I'm going to pass about two. You'll see some of the statistics that we've gathered. Um, Coxey Watership District is a, a weather station for the National Weather Service. And this past year, it has been the third wettest year, um, since we started recording this forty-eight years ago. And this December was the wettest December in forty-eight years. So, we're having a, a problem with excessive rainfall. And at the Annabiscuit Lake Dam, there is no way to make a change quickly to let more water out. It's due to the fact that as you look at the pictures of the dam, it's about, it's a rough numbers, but about a hundred and forty-foot long spillway, and only six feet of that has an opening where you can actually make a change on and let water out. And then unfortunately, the way that you let water out there is that it's not a gate, it's a system of stoplights, boards on top of one another. You can remove them one at a time manually from the top, but you can only do a couple at a time. And then the water pressure becomes too great, and you have to wait for the water to go down. But when you're in the middle of a big storm flood, that water never goes down, you never get more out. It's a safety issue for the Monmouth Department of Public Works. It's, um, it's just a, a poor system for, uh, wet weather. So, we're recommending that a gate, a bottom open gate we put in the Annabiscuit Dam, and that's a recommendation, and also has the backing of the main state dam inspector. So what needs to be done is an engineering study to evaluate what size the gate or gates needs to be, um, hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis, so that you can figure out how much water would be released by your, um, new gate, and what you would achieve by that. And also with our inspection of the condition of the dam, this is a concrete dam, but it's also on some rock and other and old-fashioned underpinnings. Um, and a dive inspection would be involved too. Um, so basically, you do that preliminary engineering study, and then you find out what needs to be done, what are the costs, what would the benefit be? And then you be implemented. Um, and really, I don't want to give the impression that it wouldn't be any more flooding. Um, and really, I don't want to give the impression that it wouldn't be any more flooding. That's not the case, but you can, you'll be able to have a drawdown, you'd be able to manage decent-sized normal storms, and you'd be able to get some improvement in the big storms, especially if you had a warning that they were coming, and you could open that gate and open. So I just want to focus finally on the reasons why it would be a good idea for Winthrop to partner with Monmouth to apply for this grant. So the Monmouth Town Manager and Select Board are very supportive of this idea, and they're moving forward. They've appropriated money for preparing a grant application for the March twenty-ninth deadline, um, as well as for an initial inspection of the dam. And they're in favor of dive inspection, even if it does cost more money than they haven't quite identified yet. Uh, they're holding a public hearing on Wednesday night, uh, on the CRP, and it's expected that they will either adopt a resolution to join the partnership that night or their follow-on meeting two weeks later. Um, secondly, it's rare to get outside funding for dams, um, besides, you know, that I'm just honest. Um, and some of you certainly, Linda will recall that Winthrop and Reedfield financed a major alteration of the Grand Oak Lake Dam about five years ago, and that was entirely with money from those two towns. So it's a unique opportunity to obtain grant money for dams. Um, and dam projects can be expensive, so even Monmouth goes it alone on this application for fifty thousand dollars, um, there won't be much left after preliminary engineering to actually do anything. But if you go in together, you get a hundred twenty-five thousand, and that would be a much bigger chunk towards this problem. Um, and then, you know, it is reasonable to think that you would be spending money on the dam because, um, historically, there's been a precedent that when, a few times when major repairs have been needed at the Anavestook Dam, Winthrop has assisted Monmouth with that, even though Monmouth is the dam owner. Uh, you know, the lake is both in Winthrop and Monmouth. So if you, um, go in together now, you can trigger sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars of grant money, then you would likely, without the grant, be spending later out of your budget. So that's another reason I think it's a good idea. And then finally, there's community support for the project. And, um, I have some real life evidence of that here coming up after myself. Um, like things like a good opportunity to protect Anavestook Lake and, and do an infrastructure improvement. And, um, you know, this infrastructure is under siege from climate change.
We have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And James, and then Linda.
So a couple of things, just jot it down, and it's just understanding it. What is, what is the, you know, the watershed, so what is the impact downstream? What was the impact on Coxey, uh, went down the Coxey stream, but we're letting out the water. Is that going to impact that as well, going back, I'm just thinking long-term?
Right, you better look at it at the whole picture, and that's, that's something that's important to do. Uh, just like when Winthrop and Reed, you modified the Grand Oak Dam, and people on Anavestook are saying, oh, there was coming to us, what's that going to do? Uh, so it's the same water, but it's a different timing, so you do need to look at that, and that would be part of the engineering study. Fortunately, uh, Coxey Lake is about four times bigger than Anavestook Lake. So that's a much better situation, you'd be improving the discharge into a bigger lake. And Coxey Lake has six gates at that dam, and oftentimes, um, one of them is never used, so they do have some capacity for a little bit more flow. And that should be outlined numerically in a study, not just theoretically, you know, like I'm describing here.
Also, have been involved, I know you've been involved in this stuff a lot. What is the average cost of, what was the average cost of the dam that we'll get here in Winthrop? Or what, what would you surmise would be a cost on, on this?
Yeah, I don't want to guess that it costs for this. I can tell you that the, um, the Grand Oak Dam cost four hundred and something thousand dollars, that retrofit. So the bad news is that was in two thousand nineteen, and we know the prices have gone up a lot. But the good news is that that was a very different kind of gate. That was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar gate. That was a, um, not really the kind of gate that I would anticipate being put in the Anavestook Dam.
And we had to do it a couple of times, stood in rain.
Had to go out to bid twice, yeah.
Thank you.
Linda, if you'd like to.
Um, I'm just curious, when, when there's a, um, we've had a lot of storms. Do you guys anticipate those and let it out before or are you letting it out during the storms? And dropping that water down before the storm actually hits?
At other dams, but yes, but at the Anavestook Dam, it's been really hard to do because we started a fall drought down on Anavestook Lake. We, meaning, I advised the Monmouth Public Works group to go take out some boards. And, um, started that before drawdowns on any other lake in the watershed because Anavestook has this sluggish system. And they took out more boards in October, and then rains came and whatever drawdown, um, whatever slight drawdown had been achieved was overtaken, and then normally it was a gate, yes, so we'd go open that gate in advance. The boards, they couldn't take any more out. They were checking every two days, and I was checking in with them to see if they could take any more out, and it's just too much water pressure, too unsafe, they just couldn't do it. So that's kind of the difference with the gate. If you had a forecast in advance, you would be able to go open it up, get started, let the water out. Another difference is that, for example, right now, there are boards out that, um, so the opening is about half free of boards. And that's as far as we could get this year. With a bottom-opening gate, you could open it wide, so you could have that whole six-foot or so of opening free of water. And you could, um, do it quickly.
Well, I wanted to ask about this, uh, partnering in this, uh, grant that we'll look at. Um, with this, with the partnering, partnering in this grant, with this, or do you anticipate this binding us into funding half the entire project or a percentage of the entire project?
I don't anticipate that, and I imagine that kind of group would do something to make sure that this, they wouldn't be bound into it. This is a, a study to see what would, what's needed. And hopefully, there'd be some money left over at the time to then add to if they wish to actually implement the plan.
Any other questions? Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, so I'm just going to leave you a copy of what I said and what I didn't say again. Feel free to get back to me with any questions.
Thank you. There are other residents who'd like to come on?
Okay, can everyone hear everything?
Yes.
My name is Carol Grant, and I'm the president of the Anavestook Lake Improvement Association. And I wanted to, um, read a letter of support. But first, I want to say, um, thank you to Wendy Dennis of CWB because she's really brought this important matter to our attention. And she's given a wonderful presentation before, you guys really only heard, um, a fraction of it. And I mean, wanted to have her ask to hear more about it, but it's, um, it's pretty vital that we take care of this issue. And I think it is imperative for Winthrop to be involved because half of the residents on Anavestook Lake are your property owners and your debt payers. And it does affect everyone, um, on the Winthrop and Monmouth side of the lake. So I want to say that ALIA, the Anavestook Lake Improvement Association, is in supportive efforts to move towards a goal of modifying the Martin Homie Dam on Anavestook Lake to increase outflow capacity and to mitigate high water on the lake. We recognize that this has been an ongoing issue that has worsened with weather changes over the last few years. We recognize that this is a problem with the structure of the dam and discharge, discharge capacity, and not a problem with management of the dam. ALIA has heard from many residents, both Monmouth and Winthrop, who own lakefront property, along with those who enjoy the benefits of this beautiful asset to the towns. They are concerned with the impact of increasing lake levels on the shorefront, on property values, and the impact of those levels on the health of the lake. If the medium and long-term weather patterns continue the trend of becoming more extreme, exactly what is predicted in the coming decades, would the Anavestook Lake Dam and its limited capacity to release floodwater become a hazardous dam in worst-case weather scenarios? We support and encourage the town of Monmouth to take immediate steps towards researching and implementing effective solutions to address this ongoing and increasingly urgent issue. Additionally, we support and encourage the town of Winthrop to join with Monmouth in a Community Resilience Partnership Grant application for the dam project. The dam project. I love that. The funding is needed to address what changes will be necessary to alleviate destructive flooding on Anavestook Lake and ensure, and ensure the safety of the dam, our downstream neighbors, and neighboring communities. So that's our statement, and I just want to say, uh, for everyone in the audience who supports this idea, if you raise your hands. Okay. And then do you have any questions for me? Do we have any lakefront property owners on the board?
We don't.
I hope you're lake association members. Technically, my mother's property, so. Technically, it's going back to the year. Join us.
Thank you very much, Carol. I believe online we have Gil.
Hi, good evening, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? All right, good deal. Just a couple, a couple suggestions on, uh, you know, again, if you're going to ask me how to spend fifty thousand dollars, I'll, I'll spend that and then some, but, and, uh, water and electricity don't seem to mix, so let me start with electricity first. Uh, you know, during some of these storms that we've been having, uh, a lot of us have been losing electricity. And if we're looking at, you know, reducing our carbon footprint and all that good stuff, I, I can pretty much tell you, and this is probably the same across Winthrop, when half the town loses power, about a thousand two-cycle generators come online in no time at all, along with four-cycle generators, generates a lot of pollution. So to me, uh, uh, our focus should be probably better spent on, uh, making sure that our infrastructure is, is adequate to provide electricity and avoid some of these power failures. Again, I don't think the last one we could have avoided, but all those poles breaking over by, uh, by a white duck, but there's still a lot of branches that could be trimmed. So maybe a partnership with CMP on an aggressive trimming, uh, program to further cut back some of these branches would help keep some of these, uh, roads, and especially some of the camp roads, uh, from losing power and having to start up generators. And as far as water, uh, we've experienced it up here where, where I live, an awful lot of roadside erosion, a lot of storm wa, you know, some, some storm water management, I think, uh, could be, could be planned for a little bit better. And I've got some pretty serious pictures of, uh, back in December twenty twenty-three, uh, where, you know, the, the place was like a river on the side of the road. The, the culverts and everything couldn't keep up with it. So I guess those would be my suggestions on things to focus right off. Uh, if, if we're, we're trying to keep, uh, you know, sediments out of the lakes and, uh, to keep, uh, some of our carbon footprint down. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Is there anyone else online or in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm online. I just wanted to say I, I agree with Gil on that, and that's really all I had to say.
I, I'm, who's, I'm with the, um, water conservation commission, and, um, I'm here to advocate, um, what is certainly, uh, the town applying for funding for open space plan, and the other town director, the art special commission, to do that in the progress plan, and it's done. Twenty thousand ten, and, uh, is reincorporating Anavestook Lake apparently, that was the last I knew. Um, that was an unfunded directive, um, and we've, we've talked to a couple of consultants. Uh, with the contract listed, we were working, we estimate up to around fifty thousand dollars. Now, I know there are lots of, uh, candidates for the buddy saw, I'm not certain, you know, I can't remember if I've heard of them, but they're talented, they must have been switched. Um, so if we carry out the mandate, you know, open space plan and, uh, to include in the application.
Yes, she's talking about an open space plan also as part of development for.
So what? So we're looking for a point of understanding, we're looking for we're looking for a portion of the funding to comply with this, 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 this. And that is, and we, uh, has, uh, in front of time. So to pick up some consideration, please.
Amy News. Thank you. Do you have anybody else? Any questions, comments, anything from, uh, Linda?
Um, in my opinion, um, I would partner, I, I would like to partner, um, with Monmouth to see a study done on that dam. Um, it is going to cost us down the road, I'm sure somebody, I don't think it's going to be a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that study. I don't hope it's not that much, um, but.
Did I share that?
Yeah, but, and, and if it's not, if we don't use the full amount of that, I would propose to use the rest of that. And I don't know if we, that would probably be a partnership, and I don't know how could you split up the use of that money um, potentially for part of the dam, for the study, and then for maybe electric charging stations in town here. I would love to fund the transition to energy fixtures, but Anthony reminded us that if we do do that, that's going to shorten the payback, so. Correct, and it's, so it's not really going to save money. So in my opinion, we, if you're looking at what we need here, we're going to probably have to spend money on that dam. So if we have money here, I would propose that we spend part of that on that. Any savings after above and beyond what we spend on that study going to, um, installing some electric charging stations?
Yep.
Brion, go ahead for the, um, that question regarding being able to split up the funds.
So you can split funds, you will need to be very, very specific in your application as to how much will go towards each. Any application is going to be a, um, full quote, any engineering firm, and you will be held for that. Um, additionally, any EV charging stations are subject to the efficiency maintenance rates. So you don't get the full amount.
So it actually costs us less. You're not getting a full amount, it's subject to the bill.
So the EV charger is fifteen thousand dollars, and maybe the EV rebate is, when charging rates are about two thousand five hundred right now. So you'd be, the grant would be responsible for the rest.
Oh, so.
So you can't ask for fifteen thousand dollars for a charging station. You'd have to ask for thirteen thousand five hundred, and then say the rest is for the fund of rebate.
Okay, my, my other question is how much of those charging stations?
There's a lot of charging stations out there, and it depends on how fast charging will come to be and what type.
Okay. But I, I guess, I guess my first, my, my first point is I think that we should probably put it towards the dam. My opinion.
I think in light of what's happened recently out in Midwest with the electrical vehicles coming to a screeching halt from the cold weather, there'll be a lot more federal money and grants associated with the charging stations in the future. I think that's a great idea, but again, I think, uh, the dam is probably a glaring problem that we'll have to face eventually down the road. Um, it's better to find out what we're into, you know, with the study, and again, hopefully it's not a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but. I think it's something that needs to be done so we can map out a clear spread and prevent this from happening.
Thank you.
So, just trying to understand it, and I guess, you know. Had some time to review, but not a whole lot of time to review this whole thing, so I'm, I'm almost inclined to, as I said, we should maybe table this thing, but I have a question to a few folks or anybody on this. If we're applying for this grant jointly, is there a way to earmark X dollars, you know, of our portion of that grant. Towards this and then earmark it as someone that's proposing for something else. Um, and whether it's, I'm not saying, I'm not really bitter with charging stations, or maybe, maybe split, both what Gil's saying, maybe we need to shoot some better itching or something that's more appropriate that we need to have in the town. But is there a way to put that in writing? So, we apply for a hundred and twenty-five thousand versus giving fifty cents, uh, we're splitting a little bit more money. Can we earmark X dollars for that dam study?
Yes, you can say, you will say in your budget that if we think the study is going to come in at eighty thousand dollars. Winthrop is willing to submit forty thousand, uh, Monmouth can do forty thousand, or Monmouth wants to do fifty, thirty, it's up to really how that budget breaks out. And then any remaining funds would go towards whatever they call it, two dollar dam.
Isn't, is it possible to find out what that, what that study would cost before we do many of, well, how do you find out that?
Yeah.
So, before we did any, yeah.
You don't need multiple contracts, sorry, not con- contracts, quotes.
Quotes, yeah.
From engineering studies to figure out that termination, and studies are expensive.
Yeah, and so this is for a purchasing policy that kind of deploy, so we can put it out for bid.
Right.
Get different quotes.
Or would we request that Monmouth put it out for bid?
Fine.
I'm not sure that it would matter, but you, you already drawn some distinction there, or?
Well, I just think that it's, it's, in the whole scope of things, it's a little more their problem where it's in Monmouth than it is Winthrop.
What?
What's that?
I guess I'd be curious to know if it would be something that Cohesey Watershed would put out to get an idea on costs.
Yes, I would.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So, uh. And Monmouth is, uh, with the plan, hiring, engineering firms, uh, or so hired. To put together the grant application, part of the grant application has to come up with the cost of the study, so the. You know, how much money we think we can use for the study, uh, and then they put it out to bid, or they ask her the grant was awarded, you're not gonna put it out. Bid for the study, not knowing that you've got the money to fund it. So there would be a cost estimate of the study in the grant application. So the firm is putting together the grant application, it's getting ready to come up with an estimate for the study. And then, uh, if you were awarded the grant, then, and Monmouth, uh, to do something.
Yeah.
Hire that you was, uh, for the van of plans. Put it out clearly.
Is there any idea, I mean, where do we get the estimate from, from the cost of the study?
You know, from any engineering firms that would be, you know, basically some idea of what it's, uh.
Aaron, you have.
Yes, so.
That's essentially a informal bill.
Yes, and, and some example, always where I live in Belgrade, there, there have been dam improvements.
Yep.
For the last few years, and so, you know, I'd probably check with them and say, hey, which is engineering first, you, you, uh, asked them to provide us some sort of estimates.
Yeah.
Aaron, you had a list of firms recommended by your state game.
We got it. So, talking timing, timing as far as like applying to the program and seeking for funding, is that something that has to be done? I mean, is this something that we could be saying, you sit down with the Monmouth Town Manager. And like providing or coming up with like a percentage that we're comfortable with? Because I can't see going forward this and having both communities granted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then how do you allocate what is left over?
Right.
It's about doubles in the detail, right?
And so.
Let's be first.
Sure.
Um, is there a, is there a deadline on the, the application for this grant?
Yes, uh, March twenty ninth is the last day that, like, we have a grant. And so Monmouth is not enrolled. Um, so they will need to hold, have all their enrollments steps completed and either submit simultaneously or previous to the application.
Andy, you got anything?
So, so, yeah. So can I ask Grania just to make a distinction? So, so Grania, you're distinguishing between enrollment and the application, correct?
That is correct.
So, I have a thought, don't know if it would fly, um, why can't we put, you know, right? Um, the dam improvement, uh, and then why can't we designate Cohesey Watershed District as a primary point, point of primary contact? That would cover both towns, because the water district covers all of the towns in the Cohesey Watershed. And then we could offer assistance possibly from our planner.
So, so I'm looking at Grania simply because I don't know if the, if that. Point agency or person needs to be within one of the municipal governments versus a, a partnering entity, and, uh.
I am not aware of any, this is where it can be partnered entity, whether it be a nonprofit or a, uh, a legal alliance or water district. The application has to come that may need as a valid. I've been myself as a point of contact solely as a service provider for a couple of communities. But we have to check with the state on any water district of you as a point of contact.
Oh, two words, that is. You don't want to do it, Wendy.
So, the, uh, Monmouth's record is, says, you know, put ourselves as the city, Monmouth Town Manager is the point person, the greater of the bodies, then in contact with the Winthrop Town Manager. I think it will move faster and, and go well if the two town managers work together on it. And probably involve providing information to the grant application to support the need for it, things like that. But I think that, uh, and, and Monmouth is willing to, uh, pay for the grant application to be written in that, for the, not in conversation, you. Uh, I'm going to bring that, so I think it makes sense. It's just my opinion, and, uh, Monmouth, I think it makes sense for, uh, the Monmouth Town Manager to have. Point person, the event, believe that, uh, it's, it's, on that, when, when, when we. Only, only one town.
Yeah. I just had another question around, do we have any, um, for like the open spaces plan, if we had additional things, do we have any cost estimates on what that would look like? I got a cost estimate on what an open space plan would look, look like.
We, last year, we tried to do a couple.
Lot of sauce, because.
Thank you.
Last good question is, and I'm sure that Town Manager already know about it, you did mention it had to be multiple quotes, correct? What is that magic number? Is it two, is it three, is it four?
Usually three.
Three. Just wanted to make a clarification, so I didn't know if that, at least, sometimes it's hard, maybe on quotes.
Um, and I just want to make sure we are very specific, making sure that if this is the project that the town society before, that it needs to be very specifically aligned with those existing community actions. Shouldn't be kind of like hazy, it needs very specific, that this will affect this.
Yeah, so Grania, I, uh, I was looking at that, and I think it does fit into strategy area G. If you guys want to look at this, this is, at the bottom, it's labeled as ten or eleven. Strategy areas G, investing climate ready campus program. And G two says develop a capital investment plan that A, identifies vulnerable municipal facilities now that the dam would be. And then B, prioritizing resilience and improvements and more new construction. So, if I'm reading that correctly, that the dam would fit neatly into that, that policy area again?
Anthony, where you're at?
Uh, so is strategy period G?
Yep, two.
G two.
Bingo.
If you want to talk about consequences that inherent or failure to infrastructure will happen in communities.
Yeah, that's another.
I mean, there seems to be some, I think we didn't get a thought, but there's some crossover in, um, F, I reduce the library.
What happens if there's crossovers there? Where do we put it on the?
The more the better. Oh, so we can get my small.
Covers.
Yes.
Then in, there are these, uh, they're talking about updating the water plan, which is, that's not what it's supposed to, but it says for identify flooding and water quality priorities. Sorry, identify there is flooding and water quality, um, problems, so that I lose.
Yep.
This is, um, strategy, giving that. I, it's, I, I.
And so this community action grant that's coming open in March is specifically for communities that have not received funding previously through the Community Resilience Partnership. So it is going to be less competitive. Um, there will be another community action grant around, we are thinking in September, September, October timeframe. They'll be over to all communities. Uh, as of now, we're seeing it about two hundred. And we'll be well over, so we can figure out the time that rolls around, so that will be a much more competitive process. Than list on the grant, which will be around seventy-five eligible communities to run.
So Shannon, I want to make one other comment just about the open space plan, because I knew the question of cost would come up. And, and I knew that they may be interested in trying to address multiple projects at one time, so I asked Dawn Emerson, our planners, uh, if she would be. She would be capable of writing an open space plan. She said she thinks she could at least get it to a point where it can be handed off to a consultant, this is where the definition has to come. So that, that may be an option for, for addressing the conservation commissions interest in a, uh, open space plan. Or, well, I mean, to be clear, the, um, comprehensive plan is just that, it's not, it's a, it's a suggested roadmap for moving the community board, but it doesn't have any sort of appraisal company for it.
Thank you, yeah. All right, are there any other comments from the council?
And, and so there are four different, there are four different boxes that we need to check in order for the enrollment. What we've just done here tonight would constitute the third box. The fourth one is adopting a municipal resolution. You guys may want to maul that over a little bit before we, uh, before we, uh, bring it back to you, but we could bring that back to you on the February the fifth, just for you to think about if. Where your interests, sort of priorities be on.
Okay, Linda, can I just make, make a suggestion that we direct Anthony to work with the Monmouth Town Manager to get this following?
Maybe come up.
If that's what.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah. And get their enrollment done so that we can move forward on this.
Yeah, well, and, and again, to be clear, before we enroll, we gotta have that municipal resolution approved by the, so we can do that on the, if we can do it tonight, feel strongly. Enough that you're ready to do it tonight, but, uh, but that's, that's a requirement as part of the enrollment cost.
Second question.
Sir, Steven German, eighty-five committed magnification, particularly using partnership as a service provider. To support Winthrop in part of the community, if Monmouth is one of those communities.
Monmouth, Monmouth was not.
How does that impact eighty-five ability to support women are being applied if Monmouth is the lead applicant and going to simply write a letter to support, support a joint application for her?
It would definitely be a little walkie and fine line. I can offer Anthony and the town a lot of as much support as I can. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have funding for the Monmouth. I actually anticipated approaching there about enrollings upcoming, so he serves the writer rap, but I guess he'll be enrolled.
And another comment, question?
I'm, I'm concerned about waiting until February, uh, if the application is due by the beginning of March. It seems a little bit more imperative to get the ball rolling tonight. If you're going to participate in this and get the application, you'll find there are a number of stats for the application, so. Wondering about waiting, that's a, maybe an incident.
It's the end of March, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's the end of March, and, and again. Yeah, and again, I think we need to draw the distinction between enrollment and application, sort of, sort of, uh, where we are in the process right now, which means we enroll in the program. Once we're accepted as a part of the enrollment, then we will actually apply, so.
They also have a hundred dollar.
They would, Monmouth would also have a hundred.
And, but they have to, do we, are we the ones that have to put the application in because they're not part of?
Both communities have to be enrolled and have to have received their acceptance in the CRD by the time instead of their allocation. Unless they click the box saying they're enrolling simultaneously. If Monmouth is not enrolled from March twenty ninth, Winthrop cannot apply to work with that funding.
Okay, so I guess that my, my question is, you folks know, need to know what you have to do. So, to enroll, and I, I think that all needs to start rolling sooner than later.
You said this is going to the town selectman and Monmouth on Wednesday?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Scheduled for having a hearing on this.
Yeah, so they're having their four on Wednesday.
If, if it's kind of like tonight, where there's a hearing about it, but they don't actually talk to the, the plan tonight. Then they're going to, you know, that two weeks from when it's gonna happen, so they, uh, their time is the same one as we are.
Yeah, yeah, they were.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, then I, I guess I'm gonna propose a motion essentially to adopt, uh, to approve the Community Resilience Partnership Resolution going ahead and submitting that for, uh, enrollment. And designating Anthony as the point primary contact and, uh, directing that to, for him to work with, uh, the town. As the primary contact.
I was trying to compute. I think it's Anna.
Well, wait a second, so, so, so let's, let's just focus on us to present, sure. So, so if, if you want to make a motion tonight, I might suggest that the move to approve the Community Resilience Partner Resolution that prioritizes the following action items. Improvements to the, and, or a engineering study of the Anavestip Lake Dam. And designates the town manager as the primary important contact to the Community Resilience Partnership. So, so that just focuses on, on us, and then I will work with the Monmouth, with the Monmouth, yes, on enrollment.
Honestly, committing to any, uh, any amount of funds or.
Cause I thought, I thought you guys wanted him to bring a resolution back before we did that.
That's, that's where I'm going with that. I would like to know the details of what we're talking to Monmouth, what we're discussing to Monmouth. Before we actually commit to.
Okay, okay, again.
You're talking enrollment, all right?
Yes, yes, so, so, so this is two separate track, right? And right now, we got it involved, so at the very minimum, we know that, yes, we want fifty thousand dollars.
We're gonna do it.
Of, of money.
Yeah.
And then, once we're enrolled, then we submit the application that says, here's how we're proposing spending that. And if we do that in partnership with the town of Monmouth, then we propose something that, that will make you, so a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's later, that's.
That's, that's a little later, thanks.
And that requires a procuring plan in place to do that.
Well, well, and as Grania said, then, it sounds like we will need some quotes. Let's, so let's just say we're moving this fall, rolling, we're moving forward with the town of Monmouth. We're both interested in doing an engineering study of the dam. We're not sure how much it's gonna cost. We use, uh, Wendy's list, uh, state-approved engineers or, or engineers that have been vetted by the main state dam inspector. And, and so, and so we, we solicit some estimates from them, we include those in the application. The state, let's say the state approves the application, then we would actually put the, the project out with it. To see whom we would hire, if that, that is, if we're able.
Can you read Grania's motion out in the past?
Just do it.
One more comment from you.
This is like a suggestion in the event that all of us travel. If they, people really highlighted the really necessary improvements in infrastructure and highlighted that strategy area G is a really important area of the park. And that's what we're all talking about, we, I might just suggest that rather than identifying the, the whereas, that you want to focus on a specific project. You may want to say that you want to. Invest in climate-ready infrastructure, so that should Monmouth say, we've got a million dollars and somebody who really loves dam projects. That way, what we do as motions might not have to be done later. If you go build all the culverts in the world, or all a different dam project. At a different dam location.
Like a motion of all, but, yeah. Yes, I think Stephen makes an excellent uh, suggestion here, so so in that uh, in that first line, we do the suggested motion, we just use the language and strategy, strategy area G, as he just said, invest in climate ready infrastructure.
Let's say I just say strategy section G.
Sure.
Strategy area G.
Alright. I'll move to approve the community resilience partnership resolution, the priorities prioritizes the following action items. Strategy G. And designates our town manager as a primary employment contact to the community resilience partnership.
I'll second.
All in favor? All are in favor? Thank you very much.
Can we encourage somebody to go to the town Mon's select board meeting? If it's not one of us, maybe.
Sorry, unfortunately, I'm not, uh, I'm going to be out of town that evening, but. Yeah, but.
Alright. Thank you very much, uh, everyone for coming in and presenting and discussing this, and thank you to those online on Zoom uh, for also discussing. Thanks, we appreciate it. Thank you. Right, moving on to item zero zero six, consideration of dispersment warrants. From James. Terrible entertainment motion.
I got it, I got it.
Second.
I got.
We have one question. So we have a motion and a second, now discussion.
Apparently, I talked to Anthony about. Rummel, the transfer, uh, you know, the salvage yard, transfer our solid waste. To wherever, for Bangalore, wherever it goes, talking to. It seems like a pretty bad cause, I guess I don't remember seeing that in there before. And my question is, don't we own our own tractor, don't we, haven't we ever tractor, uh, transported our own solid waste in our, in the trailer? We bought a brand new tractor to do that, so.
You mean a truck, a trailer?
Yeah, the the tractors, there's a semi, but when I, when I say tractor, I'm talking about a truck. So, we bought a brand new one, I remember that happening, it's a big black one, then it hooks in and takes what the compact is up in the harbor up currently right now. What's the difference of us having our driver take that other trailer versus paying somebody taking that tonnage, which is like nine thousand dollars, it's time that they take it up there.
Yes, so, Junior, asking me a question that I'm unprepared to answer at this moment, but let me, let me find out, and I'll, I'll reply back.
Yeah, no, and that's all, it's one of my, it's kind of on the record, everybody can understand it, I mean, I just feel like that's a cost, I don't remember seeing that in the past warrants. But it'd be something I really be interested in, because we, we bought a brand new one.
Yeah, it would be the cost comparison.
And it seems like that was what the reason we wanted it, because the other one was worn down and.
Now I remember that discussion, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'll have the wall away from you.
Huh?
Matt.
Okay.
He may, he may look in.
Second, all are in favor of move to approve the dispersment warrants presented, all are in favor?
Yeah.
Uh, item zero zero seven, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee, Roy?
Uh. I have a couple people. Try this again.
Yeah, use my love.
Okay, I have a couple people that were, we would like to appoint to the. Yes, village revitalization committee. Uh, one is uh. Joe, Joe Sheldon. And Nicole Stanford, so I would uh, like to move to approve Joe with those individuals on the village revitalization.
Second. All in favor? All are in favor, yeah. Alright, uh, moving to other business, I'll open it up for any public comment. Any other comments? Thank you.
I got, I got a question, and and mostly it's when they go backwards on their. Election staff. That we have on the list.
Okay.
Normally you listen to the, the list contains even the town workers, how many, do we have? I mean, the staff that's gonna be on there, I mean, Sarah's already something, is Carrie gonna be working, the other? Uh, what any other staff members gonna be from the offices here, gonna be involved in this election?
I would anticipate both of our, our people at some point in time.
Would anybody else from there?
Perhaps Deb Nichols, but if only it it's a manage.
Okay. Do you want to press anybody else to be on that in the office?
Uh, to tell you the truth, Jim, I've never encountered this sort of order before, and so we just, we just sort of copied it from what was adopted last year. So so that's why it reads the way that it is, whether or not we should have additional names on this, I honestly don't know, I have to follow up on that as well. And if 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 it need be, we can bring back them and.
Okay, yeah, great, well, I just thought they should be on the list if they're probably getting election workers on the next year.
Any other?
I run fifty.
Be important.
Yeah, they should be on the list. Who do you then?
I'll turn it over to you, Anthony.
Well, I got a couple of things I just want to go over.
Oh, yes.
Couple of quick questions, well, I I I just want to ask Anthony if he's gonna be covering any of these uh, on the, on your managers report. The uh, we've had discussions about the. Sober House downtown, about regulations and such.
Yeah, hold your fire there.
Okay. I I just want to make sure it gets on the, on the.
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
I like to do that.
Great.
And uh. I'm assuming you're gonna talk about this added position that you're trying to propose, you know? Okay. That's it.
Alright, Andy?
Okay, five minutes, they don't have to be answered tonight, but they're something I would like answers to, maybe the next meeting. I would like to see the original K B call comprehensive planning committee contract, and I would like to know what the budget overrun on that is today. Okay?
Uh, and that, I I can answer that second question.
I I don't need answers.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like something in writing by email or presented at the next meeting in the managers' report. Okay, and then the same thing applies to the planning board, quarry, and Mr. Greenwood. And then, if the expenses met expectations, uh, were presented overrun there? Okay, uh, like an estimate on the expected expenses, Katie Cox's presentation with the community service partnership. Okay, I would like to know how much time the planner spends on grants versus other duties. We were at one point committed uh, to fifty fifty split. Okay, and then uh, how much time do you administer the assistant spends with codes versus management? I'd like answers to all those questions, some point in the foreseeable future.
Okay, okay. Not necessarily, so, so just to work there, you guys are welcome to, like, submit these requests before meetings happen, and then I can actually come to the meeting with the, with the.
Yeah, these are, those are kind of questions to answer outside of us, we don't.
Okay, so let's talk about general assistance. So on January the ninth, I emailed you guys and explained that um. Linda Flyer, our general assistance administrator, has been overrun with uh, with applications that are largely due to the uh, to the presence of. Three recovery homes uh, in our community, the most recent of which has forty five beds. And in fact, Linda told me today she had a phone call from seven potential applicants wanting to set up. Uh, appointments to come to be interviewed, so they didn't have their applications that were signed. Last year, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for general assistance, this year we budgeted forty thousand dollars for general assistance. Just anticipating with the impact of the recovery residences. Today, for fifty percent of the fiscal year, we spent seventy one percent of that, so that gives you some indication of. Of how the experience is uh, outstripping the expectation of what we're doing this year. Linda doesn't have the time to. Deal with all these applications and attend to her finance uh, assistant. Duties at the same time. So. On Friday, I handled the general assistance uh, application, I served as the general assistance administrator, I was the town manager and fellow. Just to try to lighten up her load somewhat. And uh, and I think Shannon can attest that I spent most of the day Friday dealing with one general assistance. And right now, we are approving uh, assistance for those residents. On a monthly basis, simply because we don't have the time to do it on a weekly or a live basis, which we could do if we had the time. And 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 part of that is, yeah, we're gonna pay two weeks of your rent, let's just say four one week of your rent. Uh, and then if you want additional uh, assistance, you're going to have to apply for. Four jobs over the next week in order to qualify, and you're gonna have to present us the documentation that you applied for, so then follow up and see, did you in fact go in and. Talk to so and so, complete B, talk to this person, complete C, talk to this person, and was any, any job offered to you? Because if you decline a job offer in general assistance, you don't qualify for general assistance. But we simply don't have the bandwidth in order to do that. So on January the ninth, I I emailed you guys saying, hey, we'd like to move forward with hiring a part-time position. Uh, twenty one, which would be important to take over that, that level, that, you know, if I don't hear anything from you, never proceed, and I never heard anything going, so I thought we had to revise to proceed.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I was under the in in uh, impression, and as I remember, and we talked to us about that the last. Council meeting, and you told us that we're gonna discuss this position at the ne- at the next council meeting, we're gonna have Linda here, is what I was told.
And and we have, well, so we were planning on having her come, and she's still going to do this at our February twenty sixth workshop. Because I do think it's something that we went to discuss this group and figure out, what is our strategy?
When I thought we were discussing.
But, but, you know, on January the ninth, I said this, since the board place is just gonna come two months, and I don't know that we can go another. You know, two months uh, with this, because she simply doesn't have the time to to deal with this. Now, the logical question for you guys to ask is, well, how would we pay for this? And we actually have a hundred, we're anticipating that we're going to be a hundred thousand dollars under budget. When it comes to our insurance experience this year. Because we were anticipating a much higher increase in our insurance premiums than what the main municipal association has actually charged us this year. We don't get that information until midway for uh, the fiscal year. So, what we would like to do is move forward with advertising and trying to hire a twenty hour a week person in order to uh. To accommodate the workload that we're faced with. And use some of that budget savings in order to to pay for that decision.
How much you anticipate of that?
We hired a planner, hired a administrator, there are three people working in the town office, there's only six thousand people in winter, they don't afford so much. I uh, understand that Linda's overwhelmed, and we might have to do something, but I would suggest. That we have a conversation with town office staff and bring one of those people over for twenty hours, they should down off the time by twenty hours. We we gonna get a hundred thousand dollars and spend half of it this year, spend half of it next year, what are we gonna do year after that? I mean, we have to stop spending at some point in time.
Karen in the gym?
I don't know if that's gonna work, but um, so I guess, my question would be then, if we don't do this. Are we losing, are we gonna end up losing and then having to replenish the general assistance funds? If we don't have someone that's gonna hold, you know, like a line saying you gotta apply for these jobs and tracking them down. I mean, at what point, you know, and I'm not saying this would have to be, I can't imagine a permanent solution, I'm hoping not. Um, but I would like to know, I guess, is there a benefit to having those. Calls made by someone who has time to do it? And then again, versus not, I mean, we're gonna have to approve additional funding, it sounds like at this point before June. Correct?
So, listening to you chat, and I really wanted to have that chat, because I didn't want to send it to the email, I didn't want to send all my questions in an email back to you, I wanted to have a discussion with. The council here in White and respond to it, if they have some concerns with it, is there a possibility for us to just set up a day? Half a day, two days, or this is the day we're accepting general assistance applications? So it minimizes them being interrupted, they they change.
Hey Jim, let me, let me answer that, no, the state wouldn't allow that, we have to accept general assistance applications twenty four seven, it doesn't matter. What they, and then, and then they have to be processed within twenty four.
Okay, so within that, saying, saying we get a handle on this, right, then we've got an employee here part time, and then what do we do, right? Is there a way to hire somebody from a tenant agency that's not costing us that continually year in, year out? Where we can have somebody that's here just to help us with this burden at this time, until we can get our hands around what we're gonna do? Because I'm really concerned about hiring another employee within the, within the town, where we just didn't add two more, I mean, which I. And I know you say we're saving money, but that's the whole goal here, right, we want to save some money so we can kick it back to taxpayers, we've already done two hikes in the last two years, so. That is my thought process in it, I mean, right or wrong or different, but I understand people need help, I understand that they're here in the state handings. But we also have to work within our limits too, so, and I know that the state probably has to. Understand that, because you know what, when you, when you go in to get, get your unemployment, I mean, they run me through the breakers, my son got laid off, and he's running through the breakers. At certain times, he has to get set up, so he has to have appointments, you can't call the state up and say, hey, guess what? I want my check today, it doesn't happen now, right, then there's a lot of things they have to do as well, so, this is, those are my thoughts on that, so.
Yeah, so so, but Jim, I think you have to distinguish between general assistance and, let's say, unemployment insurance, because. General assistance is meant to help people during sort of new emergency.
I am ashamed, but it is.
And 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 so, like we do with that on this board, you know, you'll see some information about. Twenty four seven, here's the number you can call in order to apply for general assistance, and the applications have to be processed within twenty four hours of their receipt. I think what we're proposing would in essence be the same thing that you're proposing as far as hiring ten pages. Because a twenty hour a week employee is not going to be qualified for benefits, and so all you're doing is you're paying. The employee without having to pay any sort of premium that would be, that would come with hiring.
What would be your time, what would be your time slots? What are you talking about for time slots? Time of the day, or what days, you just told me they can come in at this time.
So probably, so probably, you know, like four hours a day.
Yeah, yeah.
And 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 that's not to say that even then, Linda's probably still going to have to deal with G A application. Even then, Anthony Wilson may have to deal with a G A.
Anthony Wilson might have to.
Uh, from time to time.
And what about, yeah, is that something she's capable of taking on secondhand load?
She is, but. You know, but again, I don't think that you, you folks appreciate how overwhelming the burden has become, we get seven app, I mean, I spent all day on Friday with one application, and we got seven calls today.
Yeah, because we get added on our, on our regular job, we get added, it's things get added, so I do get the burden, and I don't get another employee.
No, no.
In my job, so I get the added burden when somebody asks you, you have to do this much more with less.
Yeah, and 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 Jim, it's not for the fact that the state says you have to process these within twenty four hours, you can make people wait in line, but we, but we don't have that option. Uh, if we're going to uh, to follow along.
What's the penalty, I mean, you can only do what you can do, right? I mean, what are they, what are they, I mean, I know.
I like, we're government, I like to follow along.
No, I'm not saying you don't, but I'm just saying, you're only, you're only do what you can do, right, you're limited to what staff you have.
So are these applicants, one question I would have, are these applicants coming here organically on their own? Are they being pushed here by the management of the sober house?
Yes.
Yep.
What are we gonna do to address the root cause of this?
Well, let me, let me say. Uh, we have now. Implementing some different processes in order to ensure that, you know. We're not just making it as easy as possible, so you're forward to. The the application that I dealt with. The the application that I dealt with on Friday, a social worker called me wanting to set up the appointment, I said, no, no. This is a closed circle that involves the applicant and the administrator, so you're welcome to have. The potential applicant call me and set up an appointment, and and I'm gonna deal directly with the town. And they wanted in the room to be part of the um um the interview process. And I, and again, I said, no, this is meant to be strictly confidential. No one here outside of myself and Linda have seen this application, or will see this application, will know this, know what I'm saying, or or any of the details of it. And there was a lot of handholding involved, we don't understand that, you know, uh the trauma that some of these folks have been through. And I explained, I said, listen, I'm not, we're not conducting uh some logical counseling sessions here. It's a pretty technical process by which. We're looking at an application and trying to determine if they qualify financially for general assistance, that is. What's their income, what other sort of governmental benefits are they receiving? What are their assets, what are their resources? And nothing about their background, what comes to the project, it's it's strictly with them, whether or not someone financially qualifies. And so. And I checked with both the main municipal association and the general assistance office for the state. And they both confirmed that we can require people to come in and get their applications, which which we're doing. And uh and I told Linda, it's a pretty uh involved application. And I told Linda, um, we're not gonna let them fill it out at our desks, we're gonna send them away to go fill it out, fill it out completely, and then we're gonna back to us. And we, you know, maybe at least in the room, um, as I said, there was a lot of handholding with this fellow that I interviewed on Friday. And as it turns out, it was, and I've done lots of these interviews before, it was a completely run-of-the-mill mundane general assistance campaign. And so. What we're trying to do, Roy, is put the the bonus of the application back on the applicant. As because they're the applicant, their recovery homes are not a party to the application. And ensuring that we're just, and ensuring that we're just dealing strictly with applicants, not with.
The recovery home to the beneficiary of the situation.
I I mean, these people, not to interrupt, but it dovetails into what you were saying. So you had mentioned that most of these applicants are looking for rent subsidies. Um which are then in turn paid to the recovery homes, that they're, wait, that really sounds like a racket, I mean, shit.
What?
Oh, well, I think the person I mentioned once before, I am comfortable with uh the home relying on general assistance as a taxpayer, as a.
You're essentially.
As a main source of revenue, but.
Cash payers are funding your business.
Uh that is true, but there's nothing, there's there's not a heck of a whole lot that we can do about it, other than. We do have Dawn doing the research to try to find out what sort of land use regulations. That could potentially be imposed on.
What have we found?
She's still doing the research, she's still doing, she thinks that she has some things, but she's very tedious, not that she can say tedious, she's very.
That is not, that is not.
Detail for you.
That is not the location for that type of facility.
So.
Every child that walks home from school downtown passes by the front door of that facility. And it's a problem. You don't allow drugs next to the high school, yeah. I understand, but it's it's not.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Um. I go back to my original point, okay, I don't think we need to have any more money. If we spend some spare change we got uh from the government, or some spare change we got from our budget, what are we gonna do next year? Okay, I think we either have to maybe look at Jim's idea, or look at my idea of borrowing from the staff from the town office. I'm not gonna support hiring another employee unless it's ten or a shift from the town office, I can tell you that.
I think right now, I I think right now, I would support the ten group. Until we get a handle on what we hear from Linda and every, and and maybe we want to move. Is it possible to move that meeting up before the end of February? I mean, that seems like a long time.
We we could maybe hit the next meeting, uh but we'll say, I don't, so. Anyone who processes a G A position has to be trained by the state's general assistance office. And I'm not certain that we're gonna find temps, because what happens with the temp, they're with you one week and not with you the next week. So and so I think that that potentially could be problematic. And my experience with temp agencies is, we're gonna pay a premium because it's, yes, it's their cut. So what if we can find a part-time and four to twenty hours a week that is gonna be less cost than going through.
Well, I think they say temporary. Can we hire it for a period of time and then reassess, like not coming to say a month from now, assess it monthly of whether we're gonna continue to support you.
Sure, I think that would be.
There may be somebody out there that wants some extra work.
Right, doesn't necessarily need a whole.
Or they don't need to do this part, maybe Linda can do it, they can help the finance piece.
That's all right.
Right. You can find by the finance person.
Can I, can I, you, when he says a question, of the audience?
Hi, Bernie's.
Hi there, am I unmuted? Yep, um it's not a question so much as a comment, I guess. Um the finance office is very busy, and for those of you that have been around for a little bit, you remember when we had a previous um admin assistant? And that position was only thirty-two hours a week. We combined the general assistance position, which was. Ten to, I can't remember, it was ten to twelve hours a week. And we combined those two positions to make it one forty-hour a week position. I can tell you personally that she is spending twenty or more hours a week doing the general assistance. That is certainly limiting the amount of time that she has to process payroll, to process accounts payable, to make sure the warrants and the payroll is done timely. To make sure everything is filed, so if somebody needs to see something, they're able to file it. I know we're up against it, that we don't wanna create another position. But I can tell you, and I invite any of you to come into the office any given day. And observe what activities are going on in the office, to see who you think has the time to do this extra position. It is very technical, as Anthony has already commented. But we can't just pick one of us in the office and say, here, you do general assistance today. Anthony has stepped in and has helped because he's done general assistance previously, it's been a lot of years since I've done general assistance. I personally would hate to see us lose the finance administrative that we, person that we have right now. Because she's overworked and overwhelmed with general assistance, there needs to be a break, there needs to be a solution. I don't know what the solution is with recovery homes, because that's where the crux of our problems have happened. There was one, there was two, and now there's three, that's what, three times the size of one and two? So I I just would really like you guys to consider and to observe. What is going on?
Yes, I'll leave you here. Is is dependent salary? Or hourly?
Um Linda is in an hourly position, she has salary, and.
Oh, you're talking to me? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question, um, do these, do the the homes receive federal funding at all? Or um in addition to the general assistance, do they receive any type of funding from outside sources?
Yeah, I I am not aware what the business model is.
I imagine most probably you get Medicaid, some some degree, but whether it goes back into that facility would depend on whether they have applicable. Medical grade treatment, which as far as I'm aware, not many of them do here.
Anthony, did you have anything else?
Well, well, I think Bernie's raised a big question, if not, is, you gotta help us with the solution, because this is the best I can come up with.
I would propose, I would propose to potentially hire somebody on a monthly, month-to-month, unknown, month-to-month basis. With an assessment at the end of every month until we get a handle on this.
Well, when you say assessment, I'm good, I'm good with that, but 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 what would what would that entail?
Uh a discussion maybe with the council. Of whether or not this needs to be a permanent position, whether or not uh it looks like the applicants are declining.
So 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 let me say this, in the long run, we might be able to save money by hiring this position. Because like I said, we're approving assistance on a month-to-month basis, or we could actually be approving it on a week-to-week basis. And the fact of the matter is, none of those folks who have lived in a recovery home, who go apply for general assistance, have come back a second time. Because of the requirements that we placed on them, uh that they must meet in order to qualify for a second month of assistance. So if we do that on a week-to-week basis, you know, we say, okay, we need to see that you applied for four jobs this week. And they come back and they apply for less than four jobs, and we say.
There you go, that speaks to it, if we can curb what's going on right now, and with a temporary position. We get a handle on it in a month or two, we may not need that position ongoing.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the demand is going to diminish.
It depends on what, it depends on what defines it.
Oh, Dawn, Dawn finds out.
I mean, Dawn finds out.
Well, we can, we can say two or three months from now, this is still carrying on, we could turn it over.
Wait, Karen, are there counselors?
Yeah. Just one last one, so again, what I'm saying is, if we're not getting, so the monthly uh assistance for a month's worth of rented.
I understand what you're saying.
For a recovery home, it's six hundred sixty-one dollar and fifty cents. So if we're not handing the recovery home six hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents, and instead we're giving them a fourth of that. And requiring that the residents seek four jobs a week, and they fail to do that, then we're only out one fourth of six hundred sixty-one dollars.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so so what I'm saying is, is having that temporary position may actually be a cost savings compared to how we're having to operate now. Simply because we don't have the bandwidth to deal with that on a weekly basis.
So even the people that you, right now, that are under general assistance, no one's checking, see if they are are actually applying for four jobs, is what you're saying?
So if they do.
Those even could be saved.
Well, quite a month, he's, he's saying essentially four jobs a month.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
Four jobs a week.
Four jobs, so there'd be six to eight jobs a month, so if they come back and apply for a second month, then we say, okay, give us your documentation listing all sixteen jobs that you apply for. Who you're talking to, when, and where you are.
How much is the state reimbursement?
Seventy percent right now, and so I emailed you guys a bit earlier that there's a bill pending before the legislature that would reset that to ninety percent. And so this community would be well-served if you, as fellow elected uh officials, would contact our state representative and our state senator saying. Hey, we're being eaten alive here, we need a higher rate of reimbursement.
We should be having Senator Hickman and Representative Hasson Fest come in here and hear what we are going through right now. And have them listen to what our concerns are, so when that bill passes, I expect that they're going to, or when that bill is up, I expect it does support it.
Yeah, so the plan was to have.
I would like to make sure that you invite them, please.
Yes, so the plan was to have them on the, on the twenty-sixth, uh we'll have them on the fifth now, but I think that there may be a vote on that bill even prior.
Can you get us the information on when it comes up to committee, or or so, I'm I'm free, I'll go, I'll test, I'm.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm over there already.
I'm free, you like me.
I need the L T number.
So I got a couple of quick points, and have you exhausted? Any other agencies, N M A, or anybody else that can help, or offer some help, how to better manage something like this, that's number one.
Yes, so I have sent out uh through the town manager's list, saying, hey, what strategies have you found that are successful? So for instance, there's a strategy that the town of Lewiston, or city of Lewiston uses called Warfare.
Yep.
And instead of, well, well, one of the requirements is, is that if you're gonna qualify for such good months of assistance. You have to order for so many hours for the city of Lewiston, doing some fairly me, no tax, mostly it's it's uh it's pig man trash. Uh what a kicker for that, thus would be, you gotta have someone supervising those people at all times. And so let's say that we had trash, some kind of work, snow in the wintertime. We're gonna have to have like a public works employee with them at all times, just making sure that they're not doing something that could pose a liability to the town. Along with providing them better.
There's other, there's other communities that are doing something, so is that only only D back you got?
No, 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 the the other ones, uh and we've sent our code enforcement officer again to ensure that the homes are reading our fire and life safety codes. So that, you know, we're holding them to those standards, and ensuring that if people are residents there, that they actually have a bed. As opposed to, let's say, sleeping in a hall, you're stacking, stacking people in a home. Um and then the other thing is, like I said, just for, you know, being really assertive, adopting, ensuring that people, able, a lot of people are applying for jobs. And that if you claim a disability, that would prevent you from working, that you're providing us with documentation from your position. Saying, yes, this person is not physically able to work, and requiring them at that point to also apply for social security disability insurance. And that's a, that's a fairly lengthy process, but um, you know, on on this application, I I I processed the other thing. This fellow said on this application, which was probably filled out by someone at the, at the recovery homes, that he was applying for S S T I. And and the application had an action.
Okay, I know we're a whole lot of conversation, I just wanna get to about the points, so I just wanted to make sure you talk to me, other, I have other agents to say, I'll be anything, so. Slapping the point.
And 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 let me just mention one of the, I've asked Dawn to do the same thing with her professional labor.
So so the other point is, is, is this, and it's just straight up, and and maybe it's not the most popular comment. But when it comes down to it, we've all had jobs, whether it's in the public or private sector, when you added a, and and I'm doing it day to day right now in my job. Another project gets thrown at me, and I don't get another employee to help me to finish that project. So I have to kind of fit that in, and how can I fit it in and manage it? So that that's something I just wanted to throw out there, and I know people get overwhelmed, work does come at you, but it does come in waves. You know, there's highs and lows, is that point, which could also, I mean, I hire both P V Ms. And I have like three to maybe the beats that I think I might need them, so it's not unnecessarily guaranteed twenty hours a week, maybe you only need eight hours this week. Maybe you only need a six to, but have some ability, if you put it in in that perspective, and not paying the interest and that sort of thing. I know you're saying it's hard to find somebody to get them trained up, but it's also gonna be hard to train them up. And then if we don't need them, then they're just sitting in the office complaining for twenty hours, not getting anything out of it.
Trust me, Jim.
Trust me, I think I I could trust a lot of people, Anthony, but I know, I know with the spin they put on this, but I just understand it. We also have to understand, we still want to, we hired two new employees already that we never had, doing jobs. And I think we're all here from the council trying to be physically responsible, making sure we don't make another decision, and people saying, all you guys are doing up there is hiring more people. So that's my, and that's just, I'll I'll say no more.
I think too, if the gross uh G A is around six hundred and one, then round numbers. And we're getting reimbursed seventy percent, we're only spending a hundred and eighty dollars a month, which is, which is enough.
No, Bernie's saying no.
No. No. We uh we do not get reimbursed for the labor that's involved in applying for the general assistance applications. We only get reimbursed the seventy percent on what we actually give out to a client. The other thing that I'd like to, the other thing that I'd like to say is, and I forgot what it was, um. Oh, if we are awarding right now a full month of rent, there's no guarantee that that, that resident is staying at that home for that full month. And I'm gonna guarantee you, we're not getting any money back from the home if that client leaves mid-month. That itself would be a cost saving by doing the weekly, as Anthony was saying.
You're right, I don't even know how we track that, I would, we don't have to find out.
So you had to hire somebody that tracks it.
If I can, um if we can just kind of go around the table and just discuss real quick, they've just given off a date as far as what you're thinking.
I I think that I have seen Anthony manage uh the town office so far, so I have no doubts that everyone is working to their.
no doubts that everyone is working to their ability. So, you know, in, in that sense, I have no bond whatsoever in. Um, and I, but I do think that uh, we need to be able to do the weekly intervention, not month. I, we can't do monthly, we're not gonna be able to afford it, we're going to run out of money. And I, and the problem that I've seen, because I've been monitoring this on social media too, is that the word is out and this is, you know, this, this, Portland, Lewiston, and um, so it's, it's a network. And if they see that it's a business model and then there's other availability, we're not going, it's not gonna stop. So I think that in the meantime, I don't, if it had to be six months to get someone to stay and because instead of monthly, I could see someone being like, I'm not gonna work in, you know, whatever, then maybe that's what we need to do, something needs to happen, we need, it's not sustainable.
You need to hire somebody to monitor this, that's what we're asking.
Yeah.
Right, so you're just asking.
I would be, I would be for, you know, it's, it's obvious that, I think, I would be for hiring somebody, but only with a uh, only with a set timeframe, whether it be monthly, whether it be three months. I mean, a lot of places do a ninety days. Uh, ninety days into it, it's not necessarily, you're not necessarily assessing the person's performance. You're assessing what, what our need at that point is to continue. And if we need to turn it into, we can always turn it into a permanent position. And we can also say, track the, this is what we're saving at this point in three months on the general assistance versus what we're spending on the position, and then people can see that as well.
I would agree with your, your perspective on that. I mean, I totally understand, I don't think your staff's not doing anything. I don't want that made perfectly clear. I think everybody's probably putting their time in and they're just as busy as anything, and I think everybody's sitting around just doing nothing. So I'm not saying everybody has a lot of bandwidth to cover this, I, so I just wanna make sure that's clear. I do like the, maybe a six month, and it's always gonna be tough, no matter what you do, but I, you just mentioning that, first in the head, I don't mind having a six month position, and then, and saying, hey, and see what it looks like, you know what, in six months, it's half the cost of what you proposed. Dawn may just find something to help us out, and and it's, I'm not trying to cheat anybody, not cheat anybody out of anything. The general systems may need, I, I want to help somebody, it's not that, it's not, I'm not wanting to have them be in our community. But I just wanna make sure that it doesn't become this conglomerate, this comes here and it's easy, right? And we're going up, and it's then on the shoulders of our taxpayers, right? I think we're all a, a, a very giving community, so I think we're willing to help people, but I just wanna do it mindfully, that's all.
Chris?
Um, just to answer quickly, I'm all for hiring another person to lend assistance in that. You have to take into consideration that if you're filling out these applications and you say it's as difficult, there's a training period that's involved here. I don't know what your policy is from a review standpoint with a new employee, if you do it at the end of six months. But I think by that time, you'll be able to better determine if you need to continue on with that person or if you need to cut loose. So I think that just in the policing of those funds, I'm very concerned about us becoming a target uh, for these predatory, you know, recovery houses, quote unquote. And I do have some experience, I'd be happy to share with anybody if they're nervous.
Any, go ahead.
Okay, um, I have the same concerns about, you know, becoming a target if we do last. I, I am well aware that if we do this weekly, we'll save money. Okay, we might still resist hiring another person. Okay, I think we need to start thinking about doing more than less. There's only six thousand of us in this town and we keep hiring, we keep payrolls up. I, I, I just, if we, I trained somebody out of the town office for twenty hours a week, six months from now, if we don't need them, they go back to work at the town office. We're gonna save a lot, I miss.
I agree with you guys, six months, let's go.
Done.
All right, it sounds like consensus was uh, weekly intervention for the hiring, not six months.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, just two more quick things, so.
I have one more quick thing to ask about that.
This is a manager report, right?
Well, this is the only chance we're getting to this, doesn't it?
I'm after.
So, so uh, the state's encouraging municipalities to adopt the dot gov domain. Uh, once upon a time, there was a process associated to it, that doesn't appear to be the case anymore. Um, it lends sort of legitimacy to your website, so people know that, oh, it's dot gov, it's, it's legit. Uh, makes sense to me, and again, the state's pushing municipalities towards that, just wanna make sure that no one had any concerns about us.
I don't have any concern based on the, what we've been doing as far as the notifications and all that now. As long as it's out there, that people know that this is what we're doing.
Well, and for a certain amount.
And you can also push everything to that page.
Yeah, yes, and for a certain amount of time, if people went to dot gov, it's still.
Yeah.
They prefer it.
How does that work with our emails right now, they're dot org?
Same thing, yeah.
Same thing.
Same thing, so it would switch to dot gov, but for a certain period of time, if someone continues using the dot gov.
It'd be a whole lot.
Yeah, yeah, our I T.
Which kind of, I'll, I'll make this by the government.
Does that change?
I got a hand draw.
So, uh, uh, and this, so Deb's done a lot of the website work since she's come on board, but in this instance, I'd want to bring uh, technical experts in the south as well, and we'd be working with uh, Sierra as well on, on our email platform. Uh, and then lastly, uh, as I mentioned, I'm gonna be out of town on Wednesday, actually, I'm out of town Wednesday, Friday. So I know you got a colleague, one of these guys vacation's gonna be.
Snow days, vacation days.
I think Mr. I work every snow day. So, uh, so anyway, so I just wanted, wanted to let you know, I'll be out of town, Wednesday, Friday, doesn't get so.
Thank you.
So I have one more piece that I wanted, talking with Dawn initially about these uh, recovery homes. She said that the, there was some federal mandate she dug up about zoning and all kinds of stuff. They treat it as a single-family home uh, for zoning purposes. Is that, is there any way, I mean.
She was, as I said, uh, the word I was looking for earlier was meticulous, she's very meticulous in her research, and she's still doing that, but uh, yeah, she's, she's trying to reconcile how a, a home with forty five beds would be considered a single-family home or.
And also, if it's considered a single-family home, why are we giving out forty six individual general assistance awards, so?
Maybe see.
Yeah, but, but, because more, because the, the, the assistance doesn't go to a residence, it goes to a resident, not a residence.
So when a single-family residence, they get multiple, they, they could apply for a club.
Yeah, here's the problem. It's a dwelling unit, all right, there's only one kitchen in the place, then they have rooms. So it's a dwelling unit, doesn't matter if it's four-roomed or five, okay, so it's a single family.
I didn't thought about it at first, but, but you may be right. I said, you may be right, I hadn't really thought about it at first, but that, that is, that is how, it's like, I mean, that's how dwelling is, is defined, it doesn't have a.
All right, everyone entertain emotions, so.
Second, second. All are the same.
Very.